Thank you, and would everybody please join me at the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, next we are going to have, or I should say, do we have a report out from closed session?
No reportable action taken in closed session. Mayor.
Thank you very much. So we will move on then to our mayor's report where we have one proclamation. And that is for Older Americans Month, and Councilmember Castellano is going to read that today. If you'd like to stand up, you can, or you could stand up at the end. All right.
This is the City of Eureka proclamation in recognition of Older Americans Month, May 20. Whereas older adults play vital, positive roles in our communities as family members, friends, mentors, volunteers, civic leaders, members of the workforce, and more. And whereas diverse communities are strong communities, and ensuring that older adults remain involved and included in our communities benefits everyone. And whereas just as every person is unique, so too is how they age and how they choose to do it, and there is no right way. And whereas it benefits everyone when older adults can age in their communities, living independently for as long as and participating in ways they choose. Now therefore, I, Leslie Castellano, on behalf of the Eureka City Council and Mayor Susan Seaman, do hereby proclaim that the City Council of the City of Eureka recognizes May 2022 to be Older Americans Month. We urge residents to take time during this month to recognize older adults who are aging their way and serving our community.
And so I will invite you to say a few things about the proclamation if you would like, and then we're going to get to hear President Ms. Kraft after.
Yeah, it's been a few years since we've done things like this, but we thought we'd do it. And the theme this year, Aging Our Way, or Aging Their Way, are, I think, really appropriate because we are all very different, and we are different when we're young, and we're different when we're older. And you can't put everybody in one category. You can't put a 60-year-old in the same category as a 100-year-old. You wouldn't do that with kids. You can't do it with adults either. So just encouraging people to recognize that. And we're all aging, and we might as well be doing it our way, I guess. So I don't know if any of you have seen our ad. It's been on KIM on television, but it's cute. It's a couple, a few of our staff and volunteers talking about what they do to age their way. So encourage everyone to do that. And do you want us to just do, go into your other thing, or my other thing?
Yeah, so what I will say, so this is Director Maggie Kraft from Area 1.
It's been a long life. I mean, day, I mean, week.
Area 1 agency on aging. I get that. And so we also provide a stipend to your organization. And so you were coming to give us a short presentation to tell us what's up with you and what you've been doing. So yeah, you can go ahead and start your presentation.
Okay, thank you. So somewhere out in the virtual world is my manager programs, who is going to share a little, some data. People like data, some information about what we've been doing, and kind of where we're looking forward to going with what we're learning. And so her name is Megan Gallagher. You have her?
We have her already.
Okay, so she has a few slides she wants to share with you, and then I'll come back and just say a couple more things. We'll be done.
Excellent. Megan, would you like to start?
Well, while she's figuring that out, I will figure something else out, because I don't want to waste your time or take more time than needed. But I wanted to just mention to you what has been happening in the last couple of years at the state level regarding what is called the California Master Plan for Aging. And I brought with me, and I emailed to Pam copies. This is the first report after a year and of work, and I think it's really interesting for the city because a lot of what you are doing to make this a better place to live for everybody fits into a lot of what the master plan on aging is saying. So, oh, yes, sorry, those are my slides. So I just wanted to go over that real, could we put it in slide mode? Oh, was that me? I gotta do it. All right, so there are, there are basically five goals, and they revolve around how to make life better for people as we age. And one is around housing for all stages and all aging, and I know the city is doing a lot for housing. And the state is pushing a lot for cities and jurisdictions to do that. The other one is looking at healthcare and health. Third goal, looking at inclusion equity and not isolation. Digital divide with COVID was a, was a big issue, and it's a big issue also for low-income people, people who live in rural areas, children. It's a big issue, and it needs to be continually addressed. Caregiving. I know that there was recently a wonderful celebration about the county getting involved in childcare and trying to solve these, congratulations, solve these issues. Carrying is a continuum, and, and many people who are struggling with childcare issues right now, in a few years, if not already, are working and struggling with caregiving issues for their fam- for older members of the family. So we really have to look at the whole family when we talk about family and caregiving. And just being able to afford aging. There's, I'm like that sliver of a person there in 2010, because I wasn't quite 60, but now I am. But you just, the numbers are growing, and there's just going to be so many more people in the position of being over 60, and, and even older. We very old, we have very old, old people who, and old is not a bad word used in this context, or they're 100-plus, people living a long time. So I'm just going to flip through these quickly. There's a lot of initiatives and strategies around each of these goals. Things that communities can be doing, and some of these things, this community already is doing, but maybe not, hasn't put it in the frame of reference of making it better for. The thing is, if you make things better for older people, you're also making things better for younger people. Housing, being prepared for emergencies, outdoor spaces, these are some of the things, looking at healthcare, and, and how we can improve the lives of people who need healthcare and are living in, or taking care of other people. Equity, inclusion, really looking at older adults. If you go and take the test on, it's called implicit bias. If you've ever taken the implicit bias tests, the one bias that people have the highest score, which is a bad thing. So the highest negative score is for aging. It's, it's the highest that, that we all, and it's odd because it's the only one of all the biases that we're all actually going to, you know, it's, it's very strange. We're all going to get older, and yet we are the most biased against older people, and we don't even realize it. So looking at those things, looking at making sure people have access, they're working. You know, with the COVID, a lot of people took, stepped away from work, older people, and older people are finding it hard to get back in the workforce. We need to hire people of all ages. If they have qualities or abilities to do it, we need to hire them. And then, oops, I'm going backwards, backwards. Well, stop it. Oh, oh, well, and no one's complained, so that's telling right there. Well, I'm glad they texted you. Alrighty. Oh, right, because she was like probably waving or. I can't unmute. Okay, great. And the last one there, Strategy F, California Leadership, it should say, in Aging. But this is looking at making sure that we, those of us who work in the aging field are doing the right thing around these areas. Caregiving, talking about how we need to care give, and it's reality, whether we pay attention to it or not, it's happening. And there are initiatives to try to get more people in the workforce and pay them, train them and pay them. And aging, affording aging, ending homelessness, looking at our income security and hunger and poverty, and trying to close the gap between the haves and the haves-not, because right now that gap is getting wider. And older adults are the fastest-growing homeless population in our community and in others, in the state, and probably other states. So, and they're homeless for the first time. They're not aging into it. It's a new experience. So they have all these things that we could do locally. We'll talk to you more about that sometimes. Lots of things we could do to get together and look at how we are, we are addressing these issues. One thing to think about is there's this thing called Age Friendly Communities that AARP has put together that is doing assessments of looking at communities, again, for all ages, walkability, things like accessibility, lots of different things. And this is, this is what they're talking about. All the things that we all take for granted, go for a walk, cross the streets, ride a bike, all the things that we all take for granted that are kind of the things we, we want to do. The ability to do some of these things changes as you age, if you have a disability. We are starting the Aging and Disability Resource Connection. We were recently chosen, Pry County Center for Independent Living, to start this process as an emerging ADRC. It's a no, no wrong door approach. So what it means is, all the work we all do in silos, it's fine if we want to keep it in silos, but when we provide services to people who have no idea what is going on, when they come for service, we have to give them service. So wherever they come from, whatever door they walk into, they're getting the service, and we're not just sending them down the road, because we don't do that. So I'll probably be seeing if the city wants to have somebody involved in that process, because it's, and that is it. So now Megan. Okay. Oh, she missed that?
Can we not have that? I mean, I don't know.
Okay. So Megan, we were having sound difficulties, but Maggie is ready for you to share your screen.
Great, thank you so much.
We could hear you. Okay.
Um, so I, you can see my screen now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. I'm here to talk to you about some of our social services programs that the city has supported. So the first one I kind of wanted to talk about is our Volunteer Driver Program. Our Volunteer Driver Program helps provide rides to grocery stores and medical appointments for older adults aged 50 and on. So in the last year, we've had 603 active clients. 268 of those had a disability. 258 were low-income. The average age of the client that we served is 73, and out of all of the 603 active clients, 44% reside in Eureka.
Megan, can you hold on just a second?
Yeah.
Pam, do you know why there's an echo? Oh, can you please turn your phone off? Okay, now you can, oh, that's not it. Okay. Are we working on in the back? Oh, I think we fixed it. Go ahead, Megan.
Okay. Um, so to briefly look at our volunteer, because the program is volunteer-based. The volunteers are the ones that provide all the rides. There's minimal staff involvement in terms of just coordinating volunteers and everything. So last year, we've had 30 active volunteers, which is great, because the average age of our volunteer is 65. Pre-pandemic, it was more like 73, and so we lost a ton of volunteers throughout the pandemic. And just in the last year, we've seen that number start to creep back up. We've had six new volunteers come on in the last year. They have donated 910 hours of their time to provide 830 rides to clients and drove over 15,000 miles. So they do a wonderful job, and, and the program definitely wouldn't exist without them. The next program I wanted to mention is our Information and Assistance Program. This is where I tell people, if you don't know where to start, call our INA department. We can help give you referrals, we can give you information, or we, you know, can kind of point you at least in the right direction if you just totally have no idea. So some of our INA data is, in the past year, we interacted with 2,471 clients. So that's primarily been over the phone due to the pandemic. We have seen some clients in person. We served 909 clients, and kind of the three major topics that we get calls about are calls about health and wellbeing. About 37% of the calls regard that. 32% regard housing, and 17% regard, regarding caregiving. And then I really want to highlight our North Coast Home Share Program. So the Home Share Program matches home providers that have extra space in their room with guests, people who are seeking housing. Some of the matches are totally rent-based, so they pay rent, and, and that's kind of it. Some have services for reduced rent, so they'll help with meal prep or help with some of the cleaning, yard work, things like that. The unique thing about the Home Sharing Program is it started right before the start of the pandemic. So our first match was February in 2020, and despite the pandemic, we have still made 31 matches in those two years that we've been running. 16 of those matches had some services involved, and 15 are still ongoing today. So our longest match is going to be celebrating two years next month, which is really exciting, and our average match is lasting about nine months now. So in regards to the clients that we serve in the Home Sharing Program, the average host age, so that's the person who has the housing, is 73. Our average guest age is 61. And so overall, it's about 70, 67 years old. Our oldest client has been 91. We actually have two, two participants that are 91, and our youngest client is 21 years old. So we are open to all ages. Our goal is to have one half of the participants, or one half of the match, be over the age of 60. And just to give you an idea, so 52% of those matches have taken place in Eureka residences. And there's just a few financial data that I have to share with you as well. So the great thing about our program is it caters to low-income individuals. Most of the time, it's a low base rent, and it's even lower if you add some of the services in. So our average rent for the matches is $375. And looking at the guest income, so this is the person that's looking for the housing, their average income is $18,000. So these people, the 31 guests that we have put into Home Sharing Matches, would most likely not be able to afford housing anywhere else unless it was Section 8 or, or something along those lines. So we are really excited about this program, and, and it's definitely something that we are trying to expand on, because we all know that housing is a, a major need in our area. And that's all I have. So I don't know, if, if anyone has questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
And do you just want to say how happy I am about that Home Share Program? When we first started talking about it, I think we talked a lot about that multi-generational thing, and that was where it really became super apparent that the people in need were often seniors as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, Susan, you helped us get that thing started, and it, and for, for how long we've been doing it, we are, we're not competitive, it's not a competitive thing, but compared to some other areas, it takes a while to get going. And 15, an average of 15 in a year is pretty, pretty impressive for the work and for our part-time staff, person who works on this. So we did want to share that with you and highlight that, and that's pretty much all we have. I know it took longer than you wanted, but I hope the information was worthwhile.
Does anybody else have any questions? All right. Thank you, and I'm really excited to see that.
Great, thanks.
So now I just have a few notes for the mayor's report. I just was asked to join the Governance Committee for the Humboldt Community Health Trust, which is an accountability for community health project. So I'll be starting that this week. I haven't gone to a meeting yet, but it really is kind of a whole, whole person look at healthcare, mental health, physical health. It's through the Humboldt IPA, which is the Independent Practitioners Association. And I'm really, I'm looking forward to that. This afternoon, I attended the Fallen Officers Memorial Ceremony at the Police Department, and it was a lovely, it was a small and solemn ceremony with officers and families. And I know they talked about it last time they came here, but it was, it was very nice. Glad to see that. This weekend, the Mexican consulate is going to be hosting a mobile consulate event at address the needs of their constituents without them having to drive all the way to San Francisco. So that means they'll be there to help immigrants, update green card information, ID stuff, all of the things that they would have to drive to San Francisco to deal with their, their consulate for. They're going to come here. And so we're going to have a little reception where they'll get an opportunity to meet some of their, the partners and people who are working with their constituents here, and we're looking forward to hosting them. Special events are back in Humboldt County in a huge way. So Eureka is going to be the inaugural Redwood Kite Festival, and we'll hear more about that. It's going to be from 10 to 5, and they are expecting kiter's from all over the country. And I checked the weather today just to sort of see what was going on, and it was the one day that was all sunny, and the wind looks like it's perfect. Kiting, so knock on wood, it all works out just the way it says it's going to. And before the bike fest, or the kite festival, you could stop by Jefferson School at 11:00 AM for a Bike Month celebration. And also, it's Bike to Work Day on Thursday, so you can stop by North Coast Co-op between 7:00 and 9:00. They have a whole bunch of incentives for people who have been riding their bikes to work. I have been doing it three to five times a week, and I can understand Councilmember Castellano's been doing it as well. It's been really fun, sometimes a little wet, but that's okay. The last thing I want to mention was not my city business, but it does affect the community, and that was the last $4.8 million to support our childcare industry, which includes support for caregivers, for encourages more people to start doing caregiving, subsidies for parents who don't currently qualify in, for them, some backend technical assistance work for technical, or for childcare providers. And we are really hoping that this will really change the industry, and I'm very excited. It's something that I'm very passionate about. So thank you so much to the Humboldt County Board Supervisors for recognizing. And with that, I will go ahead and move on to the next part of our agenda, which is public comment period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Speakers have three minutes. Thank you very much, Mr. Graham.
So I'm here for four years talking about needle litter and crime. We have a syringe exchange known as Hatcher openly selling drugs. They were caught selling drugs. Before, there was an investigation by the Eureka Police Department. Nothing ever happened about that. I wonder who swept that under the rug. They're continuing to sell drugs to our community. People are overdosing on fentanyl in large numbers. Something's got to be done about it. Four years, been coming here, talking to you people about it. I've never heard anybody say anything negative about Hatcher or do anything about it. They're just free to sell drugs to our community, let people die. That's sickening to me. Also, nice to see two of the city council members running for supervisor at the protest to murder babies. That was awesome. You're always talking about people getting ran over by cars. When you're at those protests, you might want to watch out for yourself. Anybody can watch the video and see you walking right out in traffic, 101 with your back to the car. I would hate to see anything happen to you. Even though I'm against you politically, I wouldn't want you to get hurt, none of you. I've been nice to all of you. I'm getting sick of this needle litter and crime. Businesses are closed down in Old Town. It's like a slum hole. What is being done to make this community better? That's what I'd like to know, because I don't see anything happening. The kite festival, yeah. Go there and fly a kite and make sure you get your post, your poisonous booster shot, yeah. Get a couple more after that. You know, people's immunity are getting lowered by that shot. You might want to do some research, think about that. That's all I got to say.
Good evening. My name is Dee Hardwick, and I've been a small business owner in Eureka, California for 26 years. Our Bill of Rights purpose was and still is to declare and restrict abuse of power at the federal level of government in order to prevent abuse of power to states and the people. From your parking lot to your permit proposals tonight, you are being served a legal notice of demand to be freed from federal, state, and corporate interference, because nowhere in any of the 50-state constitutions does government have the power over the people. And enumerated, as enumerated in the United States Constitution, Article 6, Section 2, our Constitution shall be the supreme law of the land, and the judges of anything in the Constitution or laws of any state, to the contrary, notwithstanding. Please take further note that I, as one of the people, do realize that as servants, you are not granted authority by the federal or any state constitution to force mandates, mask, any vaccine, drugs, testing, lockdowns, passports, distancing, censorship, restriction in movement, restriction in assembling, or any other thing that may infringe on the liberty of the people. The government of the United States is a government of enumerated powers and all powers not delegated to it. Among the powers so reserved to the states is the exclusive regulation of their own internal government and police, and it is the high and solemn duty to guard and protect the people of this state from all encroachments upon the rights so reserved. Therefore, each individual elected official that takes an oath to uphold the Constitution has a responsibility to guard and protect the people from encroachments upon the rights of the people. No public official, departments of health, CDC, WHO, federal government, nor public corporations shall create a rule, law, mandate that violates these rights. Any public servant found guilty of these charged, according to our California State Constitution, will have committed maladministration. All such licentious behavior must cease immediately, or those involved will be guilty of maladministration, intentional violation of the state constitution, and may be possibly found guilty of treasonous acts against the people. As one of the people with all political power, I demand that you make a public announcement via your website to all local news stations and newspapers to inform the public that no company, corporation, federal, state, or county, agency, or school, board, or public school can require as a means of continued employment or entrance into their establishment any of the mandates listed above. We demand and require that our rights be upheld to the fullest extent, and that all attempts at mandates related to masks, testing, vaccines, passports, lockdowns, drugs, social distancing, censorship of speech, assembling be immediately removed. Any attempts at gathering private medical information from employers must stop immediately. It is my will to resolve these issues in a peaceable and cooperative manner so as to avoid any unnecessary disturbance. I thank you for your immediate action to establish order, to address my significant concerns, and rectify all abuses of our state and federal constitution. You have now been served with notice of intent to pursue whatever means is required to rectify the violation of the California Constitution. I can serve this, or you can have one of your deputies serve it to you, but it's, it's to all of you. So who would like, can I come around? Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment?
Good evening. I'm actually going to start out with something positive tonight. One of the items on the agenda last time was the construction and demolition, waste aversion. One of the items on the agenda last time was the construction and demolition waste diversion program, which I am passionate about. And I just wanted to say that here in Humboldt County, we are in the heart of the Redwood country. And, and we, every week, we are demolishing and crunching up and sending to the landfill thousands and thousands of feet of irreplaceable rare Redwood, old growth Redwood lumber. The biggest impediment to the salvaging of more of that lumber is government regulation. So I would encourage all of you to do everything you can to work with contractors who are trying to make a dent in this waste by, by actually putting it back to use again. It's going to take a cooperative effort between government and private contractors if it's going to get done. And like I say, I'm passionate about the whole subject and I would encourage you all to do whatever you can to, to move that forward. It's a very important thing as far as I'm concerned. Beyond that, my wife is going back into surgery next week again. We're now six and a half months into this ordeal that she's been going through since the day she took a shot. It's not looking good. And I think it's, I find it interesting that y'all are so supportive of this my body, my choice idea now, all of a sudden, when you still have a vax mandate in place for city employees. You're not giving them that option. And considering what's happened to my family and other people that I know, I encourage you to do everything that you can to rescind that vax mandate so that other people don't have to go through what my family is going through. It's a travesty. And then, and then beyond that, I got a few seconds left. I just want to mention, you all have kind of dropped the ball. We got a project down on Second and East Street that apparently you guys didn't know about. We've got 125 unit, four-story development at Old Town that apparently you guys didn't know about. We have a Big Brother pole right in front of the gazebo that apparently y'all didn't know about. And we have the Jacobs property purchase that apparently y'all didn't know about. There is one person that did know about all that and he's sitting right there. I suggest y'all communicate a little more closely with him in the future.
Hello, my name is Ashley Teeter. I've said before, my wife lost her job to the city of Eureka's discriminatory jab for job policy towards the end of last year. The fact that the city has kept this policy in place shows a lack of personal respect and appreciation for its employees. The, the problem is that like group thing that led to this situation, it results when people conform to a singular consensus on an issue like by no other reason that the majority of people are seeming to do it. And this gets extremely convoluted when it's not an actual majority, but it's a perceived majority projected from a corporate-controlled media, big tech, big pharma, and so on. It takes some people, makes some people rest at ease with this notion that their discriminatory practices are justified somehow due to propaganda-induced feelings of benevolence or a fake moral high ground. This moral high ground is imaginary due to its one-sided perspective and quickly falls apart with the blatant hypocrisy such as supporting women's rights to, you know, kill full-term pregnancies. I mean, what, what, I don't know exactly where people who stood up for that stand. Is it just free for all? Let's see. All within our country, like no one under the, or in our county, no one under the age of 49 has like died from COVID according to our county dashboard. Of the almost 140 people who have died from COVID, like 72 had two or more comorbidities. So that brings into question, did they die from COVID or with COVID? 2021, the year of the gas rollout had significantly more total deaths than, in the county than the previous 15 years. And then the, the cases, the county rates of testing the PCR significantly increased after the shots. Like they jumped way the heck up there after the shot. So the deaths increased, the shots increased, and there's no way to go back to tell exactly what happened. Our Department of Health and Human Services like admitted that they're running the PCR test at 45 cycles. Now, the World Health Organization says that anything over 40 cycles, that's a 96% false positive rate. And then Dr. Fauci and the NIH says that anything over 33% is an 80% false positive rate. So then again, once again, what exactly happened? These facts were obtained by myself through a public records request from the county. I know that many of you admittedly are too busy to do research like this. That's why it's important to let people make their own decisions. You know, everything that, you're not scientists, so stop lagging the media consensus of fear, direct the policy on your employees' bodies. Grow up, admit you made a mistake and you'd all look more human. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for being one of the most patient city councils and I'm going to miss you guys. Especially Kim Burgele and Natalie. So thank you so much.
Do we have any other public comment in the House?
Okay, counsel, my name is Will Zerlang. I'm here to discuss the meeting that's coming up on Thursday for the the vote for the implementation of development fees that the Eureka City School Board is going to vote on, on Thursday.
Oh yeah. So that's actually an item on the agenda?
Oh, well, I don't have the agenda. Okay. So I'll come back. Okay.
Yeah. Thank you though. Okay. Do we have anybody online? Or do we have?
They're up on the wall.
Well, it's on the wall over there.
Do we have anybody on Zoom who would like to speak?
We do. We have Cornelius. Cornelius, if you'd like to go ahead.
Yes, good evening. Can the counsel hear me?
Yes, we can.
Beautiful. It's literally mind boggling or yeah, beyond my comprehension to think that the two city council members that are running for Board of Supervisors have to hoodspend the hubris to do so. Ms. Burgele, being the longest reigning city council member, has overseen
Please address, please address the whole council.
One of the two that is running is the longest reigning city council member and has been at the center of one political scandal after the other, one most incompetent decision after the other. There are many unsolved problems. She has failed to take political accountability from the get-go. It's been a disaster, her entire political reign. Then for the other person that's running for Board of Supervisor to call yourself environmentalist and somebody who is concerned about the maritime life and the waterways and the watersheds here, having that unsolved issue of the needle litter will never go away until we find a watertight, no pun intended, solution for it. Then Old Town is by now, eh, as our sheriff called it two years ago, depleted, depressed zombie wasteland. Businesses are closing down. It's not even a 50/50 anymore between boarded up and still in business. It's just entirely depleted. Yeah, it's shameful. If you see some tourists going around, they all look at one empty storefront after the other with disturbed faces and get the bleed out of town again, talking about, yeah, decorum and language. We've had one of your city council members swearing repeatedly in a court session. Yeah. Then we had that very same council member standing on 101 using another swear word. Yeah. Again, you guys will be held politically accountable. You have performed a terrible job. You shouldn't even think about running for another public office. You should resign in shame and give up on your campaign. You will be held politically accountable. You will be held legally accountable. And I salute the speakers, Diane Hardwick, James Graham, and Ash Teether that spoke before me. I salute to all other citizens that will find their courage to speak up to you guys and will hold your feet to the fire. Have a good evening.
Do we have any other comments on Zoom? All right, then I will close.
All right, phone number 7260326, please go ahead.
This is Charles Wilson. Your, your, your Zoom stuff doesn't apparently work because I've been trying to talk on, make comments on the area agency and it dropped me and, and it didn't give me any opportunity to speak. I tried that several times and it dropped me this time again. Anyway, to go back to the area, and my wife had a separate comments there she'd like to do separately from me. But anyway, on the area agency for aging, I want to make my comments on that, even though it's after the, I wasn't allowed to speak. So anyway, first is the AARP is notorious for not knowing, for its ignorance and not knowing that the life expectancy at 65 is different from the life expectancy at birth. It does that all the times in their newsletter and everything like that. The life expectancy when you're 65, AARP is presumably catering to the older people. You're 65 or older, okay? The life expectancy for somebody that's 65 or older hasn't changed. I don't think it's changed a year since 1900, 120 years ago. If you've lived through all the childhood stuff and the accidents and the wars and all that kind of stuff, you, you live about the same as you did 120 years ago. The fact that there's 100 people, there are more people living to be 100 is just a fact that we have lots and lots and lots more people growing old because the population is getting bigger, not because the people are living any longer. You notice there's nobody lives 115 years or something like that. And there was, and it's, anyway, that's my comments on the area, that agency there. But also they have this house sharing. We went through a house sharing type of thing there. We tried to, took, we tried to help out this one guy down in Eureka. He, we'd seen him for a couple of years down there. We'd, so we gave him a, a job painting. I painted a house when I was eight years old and it was just white on white, but the thing is it was still easy. So I figured to let him, and then stay in this temporarily in this one house because he didn't do it for four months. And so we thought he'd just stay there temporarily while he finished painting the house. And so then he says, this house is mine. And it took us 10 months to get him, get rid of, to evict the guy out of there. He broke all the windows. He left the place like a trash can. And the thing is, we, after, even after we had the eviction papers and everything, they said three or four days for the judge to sign.
Thanks, sir. It's been three, sir. It's been three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Your wife want to speak?
Yeah, yeah. This is Genevieve. Genevieve Wilson. I always like to speak because my heart, my heart go out for all the people. Because right now, recently, somebody say, did you hear a woman 25 years old? And indeed, it was in the truth. You can find out. 25 years old young mother, first time mother, 27 weeks pregnant. They say she has positive for COVID and not vaccinated. In order to sustain her nutrient and oxygen, they had to force her to have a C-section. I don't know how her condition is. My point is, this is wrong. 27 week baby born, as a nurse, you know, they had problem with breathing. And the mother had to take care of a sick child that young. And in the future, she cannot have a normal pregnancy, like vaginal delivery. This is wrong. By the way, this is, okay, young girl got the jab and they always, they are, they have ovariances. They had to remove their ovary. So a young woman doesn't have a chance to be a mother. You destroy their whole life. But like I say, Bill Gay want to depopulate 10 to 15%. This is a very single thing. Everybody want to take a jab, think about it. You might be one of them. I have people say, well, all these people, millions of people die from the COVID. Look around, car accidents, suicide. We all know about that. Before the vaccine, they die from COVID. After the vaccine, they die from OA. You never blame on the vaccine. CDC say 12,000 people die in 90 days from the vaccine injury. I would never take a million dollars to take the shot. And right now we are going to have a vaccine mandate. Some place have it. Like around the corner of my place, I want to listen to a family concert. I cannot go in there because they want vaccine mandate. My point is, are we being treated as second-class citizen if you have a natural immunity? This is wrong. Go look for, look around like China, zero COVID standard. You cannot meet that. Just like you don't want to find ants on the floor. No way. You will always have that. Bill Gay have a new book. He needs $58 billion for World Health Organization. So you will be zero COVID. You all die, you won't have COVID. Why do we have the fifth booster? Because we are not dead yet. So please, wake up. God give you a natural immunity. So take care of your body, breathe with your nose, and also your natural immunity is stronger than anything else. Let God take care of people. Come in law. And then all this mandate is not law. Nobody should carry, a private company carry. They, they don't have a single intelligence, put it that way. You got to think for yourself and you don't force people. What about a mandate that you cannot take the vaccine? How do you like that? You don't like that either, right?
Thank you, Genevieve. Your time's up.
I know. Okay. Love and freedom, love and freedom. Everyone desire hate and
Thank you. All right. Do we have anybody else online?
I do not see anyone else online. If there's somebody who would like to speak, just unmute yourself and let us know or raise your hand.
All right, hearing then. I'll go ahead and close public comment and we will move on to our public hearings. And I believe we have project manager, Robin Pratsker here. Hello there.
Good evening. I'll go ahead and get started. Thank you. All right. Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Robin Pratsker with the Eureka Community Services Department. And tonight, the special assessments before you are related to unpaid garbage and recycling collection fees. The mandatory garbage and recycling collection ordinance states that the owner of any improved property in or from which solid waste and recyclable materials is created, accumulated, or produced is responsible for subscribing to collection service. It is the property owner's responsibility, not the tenant, to secure and maintain collection services. The delinquent account section of the ordinance states that the city shall attempt to collect the delinquent fees in the manner described in California Government Code, Section 25831, which establishes the procedure to record a lien or special assessment against a property. In conformance with this government code section, all delinquent accounts are from 2021 and have been unpaid for a period of 60 days or more after the date upon which they were billed. And all property owners were sent a final notice on April 25th, which was not less than 10 days prior to the date of today's hearing. It is the policy of the city to seek voluntary and timely compliance with provisions of this ordinance to provide an effective means of enforcement if such compliance is not obtained and to set forth the procedures for the collection of fees if they are not paid voluntarily. Noticing to property owners about delinquent accounts was not limited to the final noticing sent out in April. The city's franchise Holler Recology notified property owners of delinquent accounts in April, August, and November of 2021 and March of this year. Recology also sent letters each month to owners with accounts, with closed accounts, so they would have time to contact tenants. In unique instances, Recology has provided quarterly reports to property owners of accounts associated with their properties. As of May 10th, you can see on the attached report, there are 288 properties on the list. Staff have also received 18 returned final notices. The property owners who did not receive the final notice will not be included in the final report sent to the county auditor. As always, staff from Recology have been extremely accommodating with responsible property owners, interested in avoiding the special assessment process and are still working with property owners who have made an effort to resolve the unpaid balances. For those property owners who have received the final notification but have yet to resolve the unpaid balances associated with their property, they will still have 20 days from the date of today's hearing to make arrangements for payment if council approves staff recommendation. Those property owners that do so will be afforded the same accommodations as previous property owners. With that, staff recommends council hold a public hearing to hold any objections or protests and make adjustments as deemed just and adopt a resolution of the city council providing for collection of fees. Staff is available if council has any questions.
All right, see if they have any questions? All right, then I will open up this public hearing. Is there anybody in, um, in council chambers or online who would like to speak on this issue? All right. Then I will close the public hearing and I will bring it back to council for a motion or discussion. Council member Royal.
I move that we, let's see, do I need to read the resolution? I move staff recommendation, thank you.
Hold second. All right, any discussion on this item? If not, then let's vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our next item, which is the consent calendar. Um, I understand we need to pull item F-two, which is the request for fee waiver for the Redwood. And, and you guys say why you're recusing yourself, right? Oh wait, no, I'm sorry. We're going to pull it and now we need to vote for the rest of the consent.
I move that we, uh, receive the rest of the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Not everybody.
I have a point of clarification. Is received the same as approve?
Approve.
Okay, just want to make sure. We are in fact approving the minutes, okay, thank you.
Thanks for that.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right. And so we pulled the request for fee waiver for Redwood Coast Kite Festival because we have some council members who need to recuse themselves.
I'm leaving because the Redwood Humboldt Kiteers is a Dreammaker program of the Ink People, uh, which is. That sounds right, yeah, okay.
We got a nod from the attorney, so that's a go.
I am recusing myself for the same reason. Well, they're not my employer, but I also run a nonprofit through the Dreammaker Project of the Ink People, so.
All right, since we pulled this item, does anybody have any questions or anything they wanted to ask about this? Council member Royal.
Since we pulled it and I know we have, um, folks from the group here anyway, I was wondering if you could come up and say a few words. I know you spoke about it just a little bit, but I'd love to hear, um, about the festival and.
I was going to ask for public comment, so.
Perfect, okay. Well, I would say even, I, I would support you making comments even longer than three minutes about this item, so.
Thank you for that, uh, extended amount of time. As you know, we're a volunteer group. We assist as many people as we can to bring them into the enjoyment of kite flying. Uh, I've recently been, uh, involved in classes that we've given to the traumatic brain injury group, uh, where they got to create their own kites. Then they came to our field, which is not really our field, it's your field at Halverson, and, uh, we flew them. And if you could have been there to witness these people flying these kites that have this brain injury, uh, it's amazing. And I feel that because of this, the kite festival is also a way for other people to come in and see what it is that we do and the enjoyment that they can get simply by flying a kite. The next time somebody tells you, go fly a kite, do it, okay? Anyway, my name is Jim Murray and I'm a resident here for about six years now. I flew kites down in Humboldt, I'm in Lake County, uh, before I came up here. And, uh, Mark happened to catch me one time and said, get back into it. And I did, and I'm so glad I did. Anyway, Mark will get up here and he'll tell you a little bit more about the group. He's been here longer than I have.
Good evening. It's great to be here. This, uh, kite flying is, is something I recall doing as a kid. I, I remember in Cape of California, I was about six years old and out behind the gully where we lived there. Catholic church had their building on the front of the property and the street frontage. And then there was a huge field behind the property undeveloped. And I can remember putting together my first box kite with my dad. And, I mean, back then you could get a, a, a paper and balsa wood kite for fifteen cents at the sale drugstore, you know? It hearkens back to a memory, right? It, it, and you all have your own stories of the first time you ever saw a kite or flew a kite. I'll fast forward to, um, last October. I had one, I had a single line kite out and it wasn't very windy, but just enough to fly it. And, um, down there by myself, uh, I think Jim was taking care of his son and different people were, were, uh, busy and couldn't make it, it was a weekday. And a lady drove down, I came to find out she crossed the small bridge. And when she drove down on the waterfront, she drove over to where we were at behind the rowing building there. And, uh, she said, you know, I've, I've driven over this bridge like six times over the summer and I've always, you know, I've seen people flying kites. And it took me back to when I was a kid. And, um, this is the first time I've ever taken the opportunity to come down here because I've got some time in my day. And I said, great, I'm, you know, and we exchanged names and where we're from and a little history. And she said, boy, it sure would be nice to do that again. I said, well, let's do it right now. And I'll be darned if she didn't say, you're serious? I said, yeah, let's do it right now. And she got a hold of that single line kite and she flew for about twenty minutes. And I could tell that she, in our conversation, she was just reliving the stuff of her childhood. And what a wonderful thing for somebody to be able to do. Well, that's kind of, that's kind of bookends to the story here. Um, during the COVID period, although people were locked down and, and, uh, I was, I took a sabbatical and a couple of years off. And I thought, well, what am I going to do? I talked to my mom, I said, Mom, I remember back in the eighties, you had a, you had a book about how to build kites. I better ask if there's latitude in my time.
We're not running the, the clock, but we do have a long meeting.
Certainly, I respect that, thank you. And she said, I do. And so I said, great. So I got my sewing machine out and I made a couple of kites. And, uh, took them down to the waterfront where a fellow named Jimmy Nord, he is a professor at Humboldt State. He was out there and he had some giant kites and he was flying in some four-string precision kites. And we met each other and he said, what's that? I said, it's, it's a sled kite that I made. He said, have you flown it yet? I said, no, I just finished sewing it yesterday. He said, let's figure it out. And within twenty minutes, we had that kite up in the air. It was pretty cool. And with a couple more months, uh, there were eight people down there flying kites regularly. And then there were a lot of giant kites. And Jimmy said, Mark, you know, Humboldt County sure could use a kite festival. There was one back in the nineties. And I said, you're right, Jimmy, could. Well, come to find out, Brookings, in financial problems, they canceled their Southern Oregon Kite Festival. It's done. It leaves a natural opening on the west coast of the United States for another kite festival. The nearest one to the south is in Berkeley, to the north, Lincoln City, Oregon. Since, uh, since Brookings is gone and, uh, and Ron Gibby, an international kite designer and performer, uh, was trying to help folks in Crescent City get one started, well, that has floundered over the last six months. It leaves a natural opportunity for Eureka to have the potential to do something with the kite festival. And we're pretty excited about that. So with all that in mind, we went to the Ink People and we said, hey, we got this idea. And they said, you know, it sounds like a Dreammaker project. We had conversations, we said, yeah, let's go for it. Next thing you know, we're out fundraising for it, where can we do it? We're talking about permits, all the stuff with the city and the staff's been great to work with and the city manager's been great to work with, nice conversations with him. Which brings us to our request. You know, it's a lot of energy to put this money together, to go out and raise it, to talk with the good businesses, good folk. Jim and the folks and the work that he's doing with the brain injury folks, uh, the boys and the girls club, the bigs and the littles. You know, there's something in kite flying for everybody. And this is an opportunity to share that with the community at large. So with that in mind, we have reached out to, many of you probably know Anna Hamilton, a local artist. She plans on performing, uh, live on stage. Uh, Daniel Nickerson is another local artist. Um, the, uh, the Drum Brigade Brigade, uh, Eureka City, um, they're planning to come. We've got artisans and flyers from Washington State, uh, to Berkeley, down to the Central Valley from Chico, all making their way, planning to be here this weekend to be able to perform and to enjoy and to share the craft and the art of kite flying in its many varied forms. Single strings, dual strings, sport competition kites, quad flying kites, giant kites, trilobites, blue whales, ladybugs, all different stuff that'll fill the air and fill it with color. And we've invited Mayor Seaman to come and address the folks. So, um, we, uh, I guess our prayer is that you grant this request and that we can all enjoy the art and the craft of flying this weekend.
All right, well, um, if we are ready, then I guess we could bring it back for discussion and/or vote. Council member Braille. Oh, any more public comment too? Yeah, okay, go ahead.
So I'm curious, so this is probably for the city manager. What is the precedent? Do, have we, is it our practice generally to do, to waive fees for things like, things that happen at Halverson? Do we waive fees for the kinetic sculpture race, for Wolfstock, for the Alzheimer's walk, for all the many things that happen down there?
So, uh, I've been here for sixteen, excuse me, I don't know, close to twenty years, I don't know how long it is. But anyway, uh, the only event that I'm aware of that we have waived fees for, for the use of city facilities would be previously we waived events for the Redwood Coast Music Festival. Um, we have not waived fees for the kinetic sculpture. We have not waived fees for the Alzheimer. We have not. Uh, Wolfstock. We haven't typically waived fees for, um, the use of Halverson Spa- uh, parks specifically, nor have we for other facilities other than the Redwood Coast Music Festival. The Redwood Coast Music Festival approximately six years ago, um, we established an agreement with them and they're currently paying fees. And so they do pay fees now. Um, they weren't for a long period of time prior to that, though. And that was for the use of the municipal auditorium and the Adorni, but they currently pay full fees for those facilities now.
And what did the fees cover? Do they cover like mowing the lawn?
So it depends on what they want, but typically they cover for the use of the space. Um, if access to water, access to electrical, um, you know, the time used for the park that takes away from other public use, that type of thing. They're set as part of our fee schedule. Um, I believe the overall fees for this, it's a three-day, it's a two-day event, but they're using one day for setup. And I think the total cost of all the fees is somewhere in the six hundred and fifty-dollar range. It's pretty reasonable for the use of a facility for three straight days. But yeah, typically it covers some staff costs and typically it covers for the use. We have to have staff out there to open up the electro, give them a distro box, um, make sure the water's available, those type of things.
Is that all of your questions?
I think so for right now, yeah.
Okay. So we've had our presentation, now I'll ask if there's any public comment on this item? Any online? All right, seeing done, I will bring it back for discussion or motion. Council member Royal.
Well, I, I understand that our fees are designed to address maintenance costs for our facilities and, um, we cannot do it for every event, but I love that this is the inaugural year. And, um, I know it's hard to get a new event off the ground. Quink, quink, see what I did there? Um, so I, I would be in favor of, um, of supporting this event through a fee waiver, especially for its inaugural year. And I think we could continue to talk about, um, what that looks like and, and what our policies are, um, for different events. Because of course, there's so many wonderful causes and so many great events that we have in the city. And I just want. Um, but recognizing that we're coming out of a pandemic and people need the joy of this and it's also a positive event that, um, has an opportunity to grow in our community and bring people from out of the area to attend hopefully year after year. You know, I, I like the idea of, um, supporting it this year as its, uh, inaugural year and then, um, seeing where it goes from there. But I do think this highlights that we need some kind of policy around that and what it looks like to sponsor events or to be, um, you know, be partners in events like this.
So I want, we have sponsored events in the past. We did the, um, street festival, the art festival, um, years ago with the Ink People. We've done other events, um, that we've, that we've partnered with on other agencies and, and had those events and, um, we haven't charged fees for that. But other events that have been down there, there's been other inaugural events, uh, the bike festival, other things that have happened that we haven't partnered with and we haven't waived fees for. But it's not, um, it's clearly not a profiteering. It's, it's mainly for, for, um, the staff costs. And that's why after years of with the Redwood Coast Music Festival that, um, we felt it was appropriate to re-implement those fees at some point in time.
Council member Braille. So I'm curious about the potential, is it, is it too late to, to partner and give a reduced fee? Perhaps not waive the whole fee, but.
Uh, that would be a council decision. Partnering, I would. I mean, we have partnered, we, we partner with everybody when we go through this process, the permit process. How those things happen. When I say partner with those other events, well, there were fundraising opportunities. And so we utilize the revenue from those fundraising opportunities to go towards our kite. And that's where the partnership came from. So we raised money from alcohol sales, from events, from other things that we did and we shared that money for that event. For this, um, we haven't been involved in that. Um, it's not to say that we couldn't do it. I just think that being that it's this Saturday would make it pretty difficult to, to partner.
And how are our staffing levels?
Well, this is our, this is our part staff. We've, we've had issues trying to get up to full staff, I can tell you that. But I mean, we, you know, we have staff and we added three, two new positions this last fiscal year. And we've gone through three different recruitments and we haven't, um, been up to full staff the, the whole year. But we still have staff, obviously.
And this wouldn't.
Uh, this event's not changing that in any way.
And this wouldn't set a precedent? This would be just a one-time, time deal?
Uh, this, for this decision by council is mainly just for this year, not for any subsequent years or anything.
Then I would be willing to support it then.
All right, which is the, council member Royal?
I'll move that we, uh, approve staff recommendation.
I'll second. Um, any further discussion? If not, let's vote.
Three yes votes, council member Costellano and Moulton absent, motion carries.
Thank you very much. We look forward to a wonderful event and answer one of the questions. It is a, um, a free event to all comers. We've made a purchase for about a hundred and twenty additional kite kits for children that come and don't have a kite. They can go to the crafting table, they can decorate a kite and they can fly it if the wind provides its opportunity and take that home and be a great memory. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's a great idea.
Um, the next item on our agenda is the legislative action, which I know we're going to have something on there. But can I move it next to future agenda items so we can move the reports up? Thank you. Um, I know we have people here who've been waiting. So we're going to go now to item I, reports and action items. Uh, one point one, Filming Commission Funding Agreement Amendment. And so city manager Slattery will start.
Uh, thank you, mayor, and hello, mayor and council. Uh, this item here, um, is a result of having a lot more meetings with the Filming Commission. Um, myself and assistant city manager Powell have set up regular meetings with the Film Commission, um, to discuss our partnership and, um, the different programs that they're running and the different, um, productions that they're trying to encourage to get into town. And through those discussions, um, we found out that they've got a lot of work coming up. They've got two very large productions coming into the area. They are looking for some additional financial support. As council is aware, we have a funding agreement with the Filming Commission amongst other agencies here locally. And that gets approved on an annual basis. Um, uh, what they're doing is requesting that there is an additional appropriation of ten thousand dollars to help support these two big productions coming into town and their ability to do a good job to promote future, um, productions coming into town. And so we do have with us here tonight, um, and I don't want to hammer, I think it's the executive director or some CEO or whatever. I think it's the Executive Director or some CEO or whatever the top level of the Film Commission, Cassandra Hazelton is, is here. And if there's any questions from, uh, council related to that, I'm sure either her or I could, could answer those questions.
I have a question. Can you say how much money you're expected to bring in with these two films? Without giving more?
Yeah, so, um, two years or three years ago, both of them I worked on. I've been working on both films for three years, pre-pandemic. And now they both have, uh, told us that they have the green light to come. Now, until they're here, they're never here. We all know that, but they're threatening. And they both were actually in town two weeks ago scouting and were here. The first one, that would be happening before the second one. Two years ago, I was told by the line producer would be bringing in approximately twenty million dollars. That's direct dollars in six months. The Film Commission has only done twelve million dollars in eleven years. So if that puts it in perspective, twenty million dollars in six months. Now, that was the last line producer. He, he, that was two years ago. And because of the pandemic, they've changed line producers, um, but it's still the same movie. Assuming that everything works out and they filmed the entire movie as it's slated to do here. And again, it's a big, huge studio, big, huge movie. And then the second feature film, about three quarters of the film, from my understanding, would happen here. It's actually being written for Eureka specifically. Um, and the director was just in town a couple of weeks ago, and then we just did a Zoom meeting. I can't tell you the name of his movies because you'd figure out who he was, but he's big, uh, huge. And so, um, he's writing City of Eureka, um, the whole movie around the locations here. So again, it would be a considerable amount of money. And what we're finding is with these big productions and coming back from the pandemic, uh, with an office of two and we cannot charge, we have to be a free service to all productions when they come to the area. Um, and we did lose some funding last year. Now it seems like this year we're starting to pick back up in our funding as we're, um, doing our, following up on our funding requests. It still is too much for an office of two for us to do. Um, when productions like this come in and they're both coming in right now at the same time. So even though they'd be filming about a year apart, they both are wanting the same amount of attention. We can't then do anything else. So we have a huge list that we created, that we already, I won't even read it to you, but that we have postponed things like Movies in the Park. Um, we got funding from Headwaters to do a fam tour to bring up location managers. We're pushing that. We were asked to do a, um, host a Flix board meeting, which they've never had one north of San Francisco before. And we're, and this is all the film liaisons in California statewide. They were gonna come up here in June with the head of the California Film Commission. And, um, we postponed that meeting because we felt that we couldn't handle that, um, and, and be helping these two projects. So we're starting to turn down a lot of things. Um, we kind of like finally got to a place where we were helping a lot of productions, marketing a lot to the area or out of the area, and then creating also local activities. And now it's come to that point where it's really great, but it's too much because it's all happening at the same time. Be careful what you wish for, you know, that we got the things that we wanted. Um, and also with doing the May the Fourth, which was an amazing event that we did, the goal is now to turn that into some form of Return of the Jedi Festival that would be countywide and, and two counties wide. And just looking at the workload, there's no way, um, if you, that Nate, my Deputy Director, and I could do this. Matter of fact, if you see us out in public, you know, put us back in a car towards our office. Because we just, you know, it's gonna be physically impossible. So that's where we're at, is that we really need a part-time or full-time person in our office and a third person in the office. And we also lost a lot of our, um, when we lost a lot of our money last year, we lost a lot of our marketing funds. So we had limited money for travel and marketing. It's, um, we've had to use our reserves. And so, yeah, it's been, it's been stressful to keep up where we are.
Does anybody have questions for Councilmember, or for, for Councilmember? For our film?
Czar, czar, czar.
Councilmember Milton.
Uh, could you speak to the diversity of your funding? Or I guess who else is asking for money? Or where does the funding come from in general?
Yeah, absolutely. So Humboldt County, um, itself gives us five percent of their TOTs plus an extra twenty thousand. Um, so that's a good portion. It's usually over a hundred thousand dollars that we get from them. Delnort County has vassalated, um, anywhere between five and like fifteen. They're hoping to give us the max this year. When I say this year, next, uh, the come, upcoming, uh, uh, fiscal year. You guys have come up to twenty-five thousand, which we're really grateful for. Um, City of Arcata does approximately forty-three hundred right now. And Fortuna Chamber does four thousand. Humboldt Lodging Alliance just gave us sixty thousand, um, this year. But last year they gave us zero, and then the current fiscal year, they gave us forty. They came back up to forty. So now we're back up to sixty for the next coming fiscal year. So we did lose about eighty thousand dollars in the past two years just with HLA. But now they've come back and we're really excited about that.
So this ten thousand would be, um, just supplementing an additional position?
That's the goal. If we can get enough money between all our, our funders is to see what we end up with. I mean, we don't know yet what, because everybody kind of tells us their number is slightly different. Like Delnort, we don't often get until August, September. Um, but we kind of usually have a good guess of, and they're usually the last ones to tell us what we have. So as we're getting everybody's numbers in, we try to figure out and move everything around of what can we do. But the goal right now is to see if we can at least hire someone part-time. There's a gentleman that has moved back to town that has worked on a lot of productions in locations as well as, used to work for our office. And if we could pull him in part-time, um, it'd be easy because we're not trading someone already. You know, he, he already knows the industry. Yeah, and is a local and lived in L.A. and has worked, you know, in films. So, and a graduate from CR and, uh, Cal Poly.
Any other questions? All right, then I will go ahead and open it up for public comment on this item. Is there any online? All right, then I will close public comment and bring it back for, um, motion or discussion. Councilmember Braille.
I appreciate all you've done for our community in the last several years, and I think a lot of people do. It's, it's very noticeable and I just, I need to say that. And with that, I'm going to recommend that we consider an additional appropriation or that we authorize the city manager to execute a First Amendment to the Humboldt-DelNort Film Commission Funding Agreement and the amount of?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion? All right, it looks like we're ready to vote then.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, really appreciate it.
I do appreciate the return on investment, that ten thousand for twenty million is, it's pretty.
Yeah, fingers crossed. I cannot, that's the thing, is that there's never any guarantee. We are working our tail, them and always bring them. And, and one thing I can say about this particular production that did say that, they did tell us, um, when they chose to be here two years ago. So they started three years ago and then they made a choice two years ago, right before the pandemic. Literally were packing the vans in March of twenty twenty to come up here. That the reason why they had chose us, after looking at three different countries and about eight different states, including the state where the movie's supposed to take place in, they said, "We answered the phone and set up meetings faster than anybody." And that they, and so, yeah, I don't normally toot my own horn like that, but we earned this movie. So I am doing my best. Now, they have swapped out crews, but it's still the same, um, feature film from the same studio. So fingers crossed that it all works out because it would be a movie of a lifetime, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item is Arts Alive Street Closure. Um, this is not an item that we're gonna be voting on, but, uh, we will receive a report from City Manager Slattery.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening again, Mayor and Council. As council is aware, um, at the previous Arts Alive, the first meeting in, uh, May, which was, I wanna say May seventh, we, uh, implemented a street closure, uh, for Arts Alive. Um, we did so because of concerns that we've had from people participating as well as some of the businesses. Prior to doing the closure, uh, staff reached out to Eureka Main Street, provide, uh, got feedback from them. Um, they expressed a lot of concerns about the closure. And so we tried to implement mitigation measures prior to that closure to, to help, um, mitigate some of the concerns that they had. As a part of the closure, um, after the closure was done, we, we, we put out a survey to the Eureka Main Street, um, membership. We got results from that and I wanna go over those results from that survey. And then I'll bring up Chief to talk about public safety perspectives and, um, the participants' perspective of, um, the street closure. And then I'll bring up Director Gerving to discuss some of the concerns that were brought up because of the closure and measures that are gonna be implemented, um, initially and going forward to try and mitigate some of those concerns. So we have the, the overall survey. The survey was done of all of the membership of the Main Street. We did take out the numbers, um, to compare them to just those members of Main Street that own businesses within the closure area. And the numbers were actually the same, if not a little bit more, um, supportive of the street closure. But I'll just go through the, uh, the survey results that we received, um, for the entire membership. Of the membership that responded, sixty-three of the respondents own a business within the footprint of the street closure. During the event on May seventh, um, there was a question asked as to whether or not the foot traffic within their business was increased or not. Fifty-seven percent of the respondents said that there was an increase or no change in the foot traffic, the traffic within their business. Twenty-four percent of the respondents, um, stated that there was a decrease in foot traffic. The remainders were businesses that weren't open, um, businesses that, um, weren't available or that they closed at, uh, a time prior to the Arts Alive going on. Another question asked of the, um, membership was, um, what their sales and the impacts on sales were for their businesses, um, during the street closure in Arts Alive. Sixty-two percent of the people who responded, the businesses that responded, had an increase or no change in their revenue. Um, nineteen percent of those that responded had a decrease in revenue. The remainders are other reasons, like they weren't open, similar to the other, um, the question that we had. The final question that we had was, um, whether or not those businesses support the closure of the streets. It was very clear by the board's decision in the letter that was written, um, for this, that the, that the Main Street Board was not supportive. So this was a question of the entire membership. Fifty-four percent of the membership support or are indifferent to the street closure. Twenty-one percent of the membership did not support it. And twelve percent of the membership would, would wish that we'd impose a different footprint for the closure. And these are some of the things that Director Gerving will speak to, um, after, um, we get through with my, uh, presentation and the Chiefs. So the, the businesses overall have a general support for the street closures. There is definitely, the participation of Arts Alive was an overwhelming support for the street closures. We will be continuing to, 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 with, with the street closures and making adjustments to try and mitigate some of the factors that are, um, mitigate some of the concerns that we've heard through the street closure. So now I just wanna bring up Chief Jarvis to talk about the public safety perspective. Captain Stevens and Chief Jarvis were there at the entirety of the event, spoke with a lot of the participants, um, and witnessed a lot of things that were going on. Then after he's done, we'll bring up Director Gerving to talk about the street closure itself and some other fact, mitigation that'll happen in the future. Chief?
Thank you. Good evening, Council, Mayor, Council. Todd Jarvis interim chief. Captain Stevens and I were there on the seventh. He was there for about five hours. He outlasted me. I was there for three. But I saw most of you there throughout the evening and, um, I think from, from the safety standpoint, based on what I saw on the seventh compared to a couple of the other events where I immediately had professional concerns about the amount of traffic on the sidewalks, being forced into the street, some traffic just blasting through there, especially after dark. The, the first events I went to when I got up here were, it was still winter and it was dark for most of the time. And that immediately created a concern for me based on world events. And we talked about, about this and, um, tried this test closure. And I felt that it was very successful from a safety standpoint. There were a few things we're gonna tune up as far as some of the gaps in some of the openings with the thought that we let people get out. Now, uh, Mr. Gerving will talk about, we're gonna try to limit that to two access points for fire that will be staffed so that we can move vehicles and let them in and out if emergency vehicles need to get in. And then we're gonna escort vehicles out. If we, we have vehicles that are left within the closure, we'll leave a flyer on the windshield with our number. Hey, when you're ready to go, call us. We'll escort you out so that we can safely get vehicles out. The traffic. But I can tell you that, uh, we spent the majority of our time talking to people and even walking into businesses, walking into restaurants. And the feedback that we received, I, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent of it was, please continue to do this. The only person that didn't was, uh, pretty inebriated and we got him a ride home and he wasn't happy that his ride couldn't get to him.
When he's looking at me, he's not referring to me, by the way.
I would have driven you home. Uh, so that was our only negative. Everyone else really thought that was a great idea. In fact, a couple of families said, you know, "We're down here tonight for Mother's Day dinner. We don't usually come to Arts Alive anymore with our children because we didn't feel that was safe with all the crowds on the sidewalks. But now we will start coming back." And heard that more than once. A couple of the business owners, one of the general managers of a restaurant said, "We're not noticing any difference, other than it's a little tough for our employees to park when they got here today. But we're not noticing any difference as far as the, the level of their customers that were coming in." So I felt like everything we heard was very positive, was very supportive. I felt from a professional standpoint that it's the right thing to do, that we can keep the participants in this great event safe. And it created a real kind of a street fair carnival atmosphere. A, a lot of the businesses that, um, I had heard on the Main Street meeting, uh, meeting, I made a point of walking by and there's a lot of people in them. So I'm, I'm not gonna speak to the, to the business part of it, but from the safety part of it, I was pretty impressed with what I saw and appreciate you doing that. Any questions for me?
Does anybody have questions? Councilmember Moulton, that hand? Oh, okay. She was just moving. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hey there, Director Gerving.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. So first, for those of you who, uh, may not have been at Arts Alive or members of the public who weren't at Arts Alive, the way that we did this, uh, this trial closure to really provide a, a hard barrier for, uh, vehicles that would get in is these, uh, pre-cast concrete blocks. They're about two by two by six feet. They weigh roughly thirty-five hundred pounds apiece. So pretty good at, you know, providing a, a really safe closure. And they're very cost-effective. They're seventy-five dollars apiece, which is, uh, really cheap compared to some of the alternatives. And we can use them after the fact when we look at implementing a, a, a long-term plan for a different solution that I'll get to. We can use those concrete blocks for other purposes at the corp yard or at our other facilities. So what are the changes that we would make next time? Uh, the first is some signage within the closure area ahead of time to try and let people know that the street's gonna be closed and they won't be able to park there during the Arts Alive event. We have to do that in such a way that we, uh, address some of the business concerns about, uh, confusing patrons when they can park, when they can't, and that kind of thing. So we would, uh, look to put it out the minimal, uh, um, time ahead that we have to, according to municipal code, which is twenty-four hours in advance, and be very specific about the time and date. You know, it would be Saturday, June, whatever the date is, uh, from this time to this time is when parking isn't allowed. I'll, I'll, thank you. Uh, a lot of our, uh, temporary parking restriction signage isn't that clear or specific. Make it clear and specific to address some of the business concerns. Hopefully that would reduce the number of vehicles within the closure area when was one of the problems with the last one. Uh, the second change would be to implement the closure later. There were a couple of factors that led to the closure taking longer this time. One is that in addition to the Arts Alive closure footprint that's been identified, which is a, a cross shape centered on Second and F Streets that runs two blocks, uh, on both Second Street and F Street. There was a one-block closure on E Street in, in front of the Clark Museum. As a result, uh, especially because the museum had requested that closure to be done earlier so that they could set up for their special event, it took our staff quite a long time to set all these blocks at various locations. Without the E Street closure and now having our processes down a little bit and one of these closures under our belts, hopefully we can get it done more quickly and not have to start quite as early in the afternoon. Uh, the next change, like Chief Jarvis talked about, would be to tighten the spacing of the blocks at, uh, at each end of the closure area. We really wanna make sure that vehicles cannot get in, um, so we would- So we would tighten up the spacing at two opposing ends of the cross, if you can visualize it. And at the alternate opposing ends, we would also tighten the spacing, but we would leave a gap in the middle that's wide enough, say ten feet, for emergency vehicles to be able to get through. But those wider spaces would be filled with a vehicle that's staffed by either a volunteer from EPD or another city staff member that can move the vehicle in the event that, you know, a driver needs to be escorted out or in the event that emergency vehicles need to get in. And then finally, look at what could the long-term closure look like? Rather than these blocks, which are, you know, very cumbersome, they take time to move, they're not that attractive. We're looking at vehicle-rated bollards. And not all the bollards that you see around town or in other towns are necessarily vehicle-rated. They're not intended to protect pedestrians from vehicles that are out of control or otherwise. So the ones that are vehicle-rated are quite a bit heavier and they take a lot more effort to install. So we're in the process of nailing down bids for the materials and then working on quotes for the installation of those bollards at various locations, both in Old Town and Henderson Center. And we'd be coming back to council at some future date with a recommendation on that. But the likelihood is that because of lead time for materials, we probably won't see those before next year. So in the meantime, we think the concrete blocks are a viable option with some changes from how it was done on May seventh.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions? Councilmember Bregel?
So I know we got a lot of questions about the time of the closure. Is there any way that we could move it up to, you know, like five instead of two? I know that there was a lot of stuff happening that particular day, but.
So like I said, the E Street closure did complicate it because they had requested that closure be done earlier so that they could set up for their special event at the Clark Museum. The other closures, it may or may not be feasible to start at five and be done by six because it is quite a number of blocks. We're using heavy equipment. We have to make sure that both our people and pedestrians and drivers in the area are safe when that's happening. So we'll look at what we can do to speed it up, but I can't commit to it only taking one hour. It might be more than that, but it'll be less than the four hours that it took the last time.
Great. And then secondly, I'm curious, we have those planters down there and I'm sure that we've all gotten the emails about how ugly the concrete is. Is there a way that we could use those planters, at least at one or two ends of this?
We could use those for part of the closure and especially because we've decided to tighten up the spacing on the blocks. We can, granted, we can always get more of them, but we could use the planters to supplement the blocks or do one end of the closure. They're also pretty heavy, they're also pretty robust, but they also take time to move and they take different equipment to move. The blocks are moved with a front-end loader that's driven on the street down there. The planters, which were used for the Friday Night Market closure in years past, are moved with a forklift that comes from a different facility. And so it's just, you know, two different processes, but we can look at it and do what we can.
That'd be great. It just seems that that was a concern of some of the businesses is that, you know, to have something more aesthetically pleasing. And I know that we are looking at bollards, which will be very nice, but in the interim, especially in the summer. More beautiful than concrete slabs.
We'd also love people to come down and do some art on the concrete blocks. They're a big canvas and we'll help out.
It's a great idea.
Councilmember Moulton?
But if you did go with bollards, those could be deployed pretty quickly, right? Those just kind of pop up?
Quicker. They actually, they don't pop up. What they do is they have the vehicle-rated, like I said, they're a little bit more robust than what we have, say, at the Maticat Plaza. They're about three feet tall and they have about a three-foot pin that goes into the ground. So you're talking about a bollard that's six feet long, over a hundred fifty pounds. So it's easily a two-person thing, if not something that you should use something like a boom truck for. So it will also take time, it'll also take equipment, but it'll be easier than thirty-five hundred pound blocks of concrete.
I have a few other questions.
Go ahead. Is there any plan on doing a survey of the public? I was talking to folks, I was down there, I was talking to business owners as well as people on the street. And do you intend to do a public survey?
Yes, we can. And we probably either work with our marketing firm or also work with our economic development staff or even maybe a local media outlet. But yes, we can do a survey of the public. I can tell you that all of the responses that our staff that was there received an overwhelming positive response from the participants, for sure.
I certainly heard that as well. I'm glad to hear acknowledgement that the happy celebration skewed the whole thing somewhat because that was definitely a street festival, had a different flavor than Arts Alive. And I feel like people probably behaved differently because that was going on in addition to the street closures and that that should be considered as part of this. I'm curious, I was reading through the ordinance on when it is required for an event to close the street. And it seems like Arts Alive meets the criteria for, there's way more than twenty-five people. They are not enclosed. They are, I mean, does, am I reading the ordinance correctly? Does the ordinance pretty much say that if Arts Alive were considered one large event as opposed to lots of little stores doing their own thing? If it was one big thing, wouldn't we have to?
I wouldn't say have to. There's some discretion in there by the city manager and obviously with input from other department heads. The reason why this one probably wasn't in the past is because of it's not necessarily being a street festival. It's supposed to be, it is an intent of bringing people into businesses. And it's not like Friday Night Market where you have beer gardens and vendors and other people that are out and about, even though Arts Alive does have music sometimes. And, you know, it could be, there's some discretion in that, though.
That's all I have for now. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other questions? If not, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm all in favor of closure, especially when you got Kim stepping out in front of you saying, you're going too fast. But one thing I would like to know, and Director Gerving didn't cover in the city manager, exactly how much it costs to put the closure in. I think the, it was, I mean, you're paying three employees down there, time and a half and plus the equipment and everything. And I realize safety is number one, but I would like to know just exactly how much it costs the city to put those in. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll take a phone call and would you call out the number because I can't see it?
Okay. Colin Fisk, if you'd like to begin.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. And I just wanted to let you know that, you know, as you heard from, as I'm sure many of you saw in person, a lot of CRTP's members and supporters really felt welcomed by this street closure, is more comfortable and more safe and, you know, more joyful in attending the event. And also feel that if we prevent even just one person from being hit by a driver while attending Arts Alive over the years to come as a result of the change, it will have been well worth it. So I know change is never easy, even pretty small changes like this, but we appreciate the street closures and I just want to thank you for implementing them. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another?
Our next speaker is last, number zero-three-two-six. Go ahead, please.
Hi, this is Charles Wilson. I enjoyed the Arts Alive there on April, let's see, on May seventh there. I enjoyed the dragon dancing and all that kind of stuff, meeting the people from Stockton and talking to everybody else there. Oh, about fifty years ago, I helped, you know, after Oklahoma and the blast that they had there, we put in, down at LAX, we put in automatic bollards. Of course, they're real expensive. You didn't have to, all you just push button and everything, they pop up. But the thing is, they're very expensive. So I think they're doing a good job and you don't have the acceleration area like you might have in some other places for the cars to accelerate. You don't have maybe like the Santa Monica episode, what's that been, thirty years or so ago? And, but I think they're doing a good job and I hope you keep it up and thank you again. Bye.
Thank you. Do we have another caller? All right. Okay. So we will close a public comment on this item and bring it back. There's no vote on this, so if we have any closing comments, Councilmember Castellano?
Sure. I just want to appreciate staff for all of your work on this and being really responsive to the public and businesses and, you know, it's a lot to balance. I personally really enjoyed the experience and by and far, people around me were enjoying it as well.
Councilmember Moulton, it looked like I had a hole.
I did. Well, I just did my own little anecdotal survey as I was out interviewing people for a totally separate project during Arts Alive. And I, you know, I talked to a few business owners who said they definitely saw more people coming in and that I talked to somebody with an art gallery who was really excited about the street closures and the potential for using the sidewalk space and using the street space to just do art or have more art going on and basically spill her business out in front to draw more people in. And I think that that's an approach that a lot of businesses could take advantage of in a way that's different from a festival where there might be something immediately in front of their door that would prevent people from seeing them and feel more like a street festival vibe where they aren't going to do retail stuff. But this person was visualizing a way to just spill her business out in the public visually in order to draw folks in. And she was really excited about that. So that's exciting to hear.
Thank you. Councilmember Royal?
I love it and I appreciate it. I had a really great time roller skating in the street during Arts Alive. And I saw a lot of people like cautiously stepping out into the street, realizing that the street was closed and getting excited about that. Doing it. And the council received, you know, a lot of positive feedback from businesses as well. So while there are some businesses who are very strongly opposed, I think there are many who also really appreciated it. So it does seem like one where there's going to be some folks who really don't like it. But by and large, I heard a lot of positive feedback. So I think staff for providing that input and for the law enforcement perspective. And you know what? I have to admit, I had always thought about a pedestrian accidentally getting hit and I had never thought about someone intentionally driving their car into a bunch of people at Arts Alive. It just had never occurred to me. And so it's sad that we have to think about that, but it's true that we have to consider the possibilities of that kind of thing. And I like the bollards for offering the opportunity for a farmer's market as well. So looking at the placement of them, you know, I hope that whatever we come up with can be, you know, provide safety, but also be something that our staff can implement fairly easily without a lot of special equipment and that it will also work for the Old Town Farmer's Market. So thanks for doing this.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I, my family and I had a great time and, you know, and we may not have had dinner down there that night, but we did the following night. So, and actually a friend of mine, a business, a member of the business community said, well, maybe people don't necessarily go into businesses that day, but they forget that those businesses are there. And they're like, oh, yeah, I need to stop by that store. And like I went to the bookstore the following Monday, like I need to go get some books. So I think although the immediate, you know, sales, sales may not increase immediately, they may, people just forget that's what's down there. When you have the opportunity to stroll and enjoy Old Town, I think that's worth the cost to, to the city to do that, people to enjoy their town. And I think it improves business and it seems like the overall businesses were happy with it and I think the community was. So it was great. I hope we keep doing it. Thanks.
Councilmember Bregel?
And lastly, I would say that this is a long time coming. We've been talking about this for at least twelve years and there's not, there's not been a lot of people that were willing to support it. So it's really nice as far as council members. And so it's really nice that as a council and as a team, Team Eureka, that we're actually moving forward with this. And I just want to say that I love the idea of painting the concrete. I think that's a great idea because they are really ugly and it, and it really, I think it would make an impact on the business owners, even the ones that are having a kind of a tough time, seeing something beautiful.
All right. Well, with that, we will consider the report received. I know, I will ask for you guys to bear with me for just a minute. I'm looking at the agenda. We have ten minutes to when we usually take a break. Can I just ask for those out in the audience, who is here on the climate plan, the Climate Action Plan? We have one person and two? Okay. And then we have folks from Eureka City Schools. Well, since we do have folks here for the Climate Action Plan, we'll just keep things in order. It's going to take. I'm going to go ahead and take a break now and then we'll come back in five minutes so that we can get moving and these nice, very patient folks can get to the item they wanted to. Thanks. Principal Planner Kenyon up there, ready to go.
Hi, Mayor and councilmembers. Thanks for having me. Let me share my screen. I just have a short presentation. As you know, the seven cities and county of Humboldt have been working on a regional climate action plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions countywide. Significant reductions in greenhouse gas emissions are necessary to avoid the most catastrophic effects of climate change. And our goal is adoption of the Climate Action Plan, or CAP, by the cities and county of Humboldt. So a quick timeline of the CAP development. In late 2018, the idea emerged and was starting to be discussed. And then in 2019, the cities and county adopted a memorandum of understanding committing to CAP development. The county of Humboldt and Redwood Coast Energy Authority are spearheading the effort and a consulting firm, Environmental Indicators Accounting Services, was also brought on to help with the quantitative analysis. In April of 2021, city staff received a draft cap that we had the opportunity to edit and comment on. And the county just recently released a public review draft of the document at the end of April for a forty-five day comment period ending in early June. The cap is being shared with the various applicable city and county committees, commissions, boards and councils. And the purpose of the short review period is to gauge whether there are any fatal flaws or whether we are ready to move on to the environmental review phase of CAP adoption. During this, this next phase, the environmental review phase could take up to one year. And during that phase, an environmental impact report, or EIR, is going to be prepared under the California Environmental Quality Act for the CAP. And HCOG has secured regional early action planning or REAP funding for this EIR. Then our goal is for the cities and counties to hold hearings to adopt the EIR and the final cap by the summer or early fall of 2023. So as I mentioned, the CAP members are all presenting the public review draft to their decision makers by early June. So if you're really interested in CAPs, then you can attend a lot of hearings and meetings this month. There will also be opportunity for a public engagement during the sequel process and the adoption process. And we had a workshop in Eureka. Um, and we had a workshop in Eureka, um, back during the initiation phase in January of 2020. And the hope is to have another workshop, um, or, or more, uh, before the adoption process happens. Um, so here's the basic overview of the CAP process. Um, first, an inventory of greenhouse gas emissions, sources and volumes is taken as a baseline. For this cap, RCA has completed greenhouse gas inventories for the year 1990 and 2015. Uh, and the inventories are discussed in Chapter Two and Appendix G of the draft cap. Uh, the second step is to forecast emissions and set an emissions reduction target, uh, for your planning horizon, which for this cap is to 2030. Um, this is discussed in Chapter Three of the draft cap. Uh, over the years, the state of California has set a number of greenhouse gas reduction targets that have gotten more and more ambitious. Um, there was originally a goal of 1990 emissions levels by 2020. Um, and then SB 32 set a goal of reaching 40% below 1990 emission levels by 2030. And then a recent executive order called for, uh, carbon neutrality, so net zero by 2045. And to, in order to demonstrate consistency with the state's climate action efforts, Humboldt County's cap target is 40% below 1990 levels by 2030. Um, so that brings us to the next phase of the CAP process, which is selecting reduction measures and estimating the greenhouse gas emission reductions that will be achieved by implementing those measures. Um, this is discussed in Chapter Four and Appendices A and B of the draft cap. Most of the qualified measures that are in the draft cap are focused on transportation and land use, energy usage in buildings, and solid waste production. Uh, the transportation measures focus on transitioning vehicles from fossil fuels to renewable fuels, so electric vehicles, um, and reducing vehicle miles traveled. Uh, the energy, building energy measures focus on improving energy efficiency in buildings, uh, transitioning from propane and natural gas to all-electric in our appliances and water and space heating, and decarbonizing our electricity sources so that we don't emit greenhouse gas emissions when we're using from our electricity use. Uh, the solid waste, uh, measures focus on reducing construction waste, uh, or diverting it from landfills, uh, expanding yard waste service and exploring residential composting, and reducing and recycling, uh, special event waste. The CAP also has, uh, a bunch of measures that are not quantified, but are supporting measures that are helping us reach our, our quantified targets. And this includes a whole chapter of advisoring measures on carbon sequestration, biological carbon sequestration, which is, um, storing carbon in vegetation and soils, um, in our forests and agricultural lands and wetlands. And, um, although those measures, oh yeah, so the measures, um, are in Chapter Five and they're discussed in appendices C and D of the draft report. And although they're advisory, they're really, um, going to be important if we want to reach that, uh, goal of carbon neutrality by 2045. Um, some of the measures that relate to the city are increasing urban tree planting and urban forests, maintaining and restoring riparian corridors, and restoring tidal wetlands. And something I learned from the CAP was that wetlands store more carbon per acre than forests. So wetland restoration is really important. The last two steps are, of course, implementing the measures and monitoring and evaluating progress towards our goal, both by, um, annually reporting on progress on the mitigation measures and also conducting new emissions inventories every five years. Implementation is discussed in Chapter Six and Appendix E of the draft report. Um, so the draft cap lays out clear metrics for each measure that we must achieve. So for example, Eureka metric, some example Eureka metrics are, um, adding 302 public and workplace L2 electric vehicle charging stations in the city, uh, having, inst- building 952 all-electric new residences and diverting 75% of our 2,349 annual metric tons of lumber waste. Um, so the measure targets are clear, but there's a lot of discretion in how the individual jurisdictions achieve those targets. As a result, the city will need to consider adopting an implementation plan for meeting our CAP commitments. Um, and then before I conclude, I just wanted to mention some local benefits of adopting a CAP. If we are successful with adoption of the EIR, um, and CAP by our city council, we will have a qualified CAP under SEQA guidelines that can be used to streamline the analysis of project-level greenhouse gas emissions during environmental review of future projects. So projects that are consistent with the CAP will have no further greenhouse gas impact analysis requirements under SEQA. And there's a checklist that'll be used to determine whether your project is consistent with the CAP and thus, um, qualifies for the SEQA streamlining. And that checklist is included in Appendix F of the draft cap. Um, another benefit of having a cap is that it makes us more, uh, eligible and competitive for grant funding out there for many of the initiatives, especially if we adopt a, a regional cap uh, that's supported by all the cities and the county. It also has a lot of quality of, local quality of life co-benefits. Um, for instance, it calls for more trails, traffic calming, bike parking, transit options, trees, um, other stuff that, um, encourages investment in Eureka. And the plan generally encourages development in Eureka because development of housing near jobs and services reduces vehicle miles traveled. And the biggest, uh, greenhouse gas emitting sector for us is our transportation sector. It was 53% of our, uh, countywide emissions in 2015. Um, also, the, the plan encourages investment in a renewable energy workforce that can bring jobs to the city. Um, there's other benefits too, but those are some of the, the, the key local ones. So I just wanted to note that a number of the city's committees and commissions have reviewed the plan in recent months, um, or talked about it because the public draft wasn't available until recently. Uh, Economic Development Committee, Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission, Energy Committee, and the Transportation Safety Commission. And our Energy Committee has submitted a letter of support, uh, for the cap, speaking to the urgency of the situation and the need to begin implementation now as opposed to waiting for official adoption. And this letter was included as Attachment One to the Agenda Summary. Um, and that's the end of my presentation, but I did want to introduce, uh, Michael Richardson, who's in the audience. He's a supervising planner, uh, for the county of Humboldt, and he's the county staff lead on the cap.
Yes.
Hello?
Good evening, Mayor Seaman and members of the council. I'm honored to be here. And it's, it's such a pleasure working with your staff on this. It's a great team effort. And I don't have any presentation. Uh, I'm happy to go into any details as, as you like. We're in, uh, kind of a big push phase right now where we're making rounds to all of the cities to check in with them, make sure that they're good with us moving forward to the EIR phase because, uh, we're going to be spending a lot of money and a lot of resources on this EIR. And we want to make sure that the project description going into it is, is pretty close to the target. I mean, we'll be able to tweak it a little bit, um, during the EIR phase and, and afterwards. Um, but it needs to be close enough that the EIR will be relevant. So that's, that's our hope. Uh, and I really appreciate your support by, um, providing staff to help with this project. Um, they've been a delight to work with and super competent and really can, can say, um, more good stuff about them.
Well, thank you. Do we, uh, want to ask questions now? Councilmember Castellano?
I, sure, yeah, okay, I'll go. Um, I, so my first question is about the industrial point sources. And I know that that is also regulated by the Air Quality Board. But would the benefit of including it in the cap be that it could help exp- then later expedite the implementation of new industries? Because the SEQA process would be streamlined?
I, I can jump in if you like, Kristin?
Yeah, I prepared a slide too on, um, industrial point sources. I can pull that up really quick. And then, uh, maybe, uh, Michael, you can help. But, um, so. Basically, um, our goal for the cap is a certain amount of percent, 40% below 1990 levels by, uh, 2030. And, um, the industrial point source emissions were really high in 1990. Um, and they declined, uh, by our, our base inventory year of 2015 substantially. Uh, and so a big reason they're not included in the cap is because it, it skews the inventory and it makes it really easy to achieve our 2030 target of 40% below 1990 levels. But it does not get us anywhere closer to reaching carbon, the later carbon neutrality, uh, target. Uh, and so we would be doing ourselves a disservice if we weren't starting to work towards that carbon neutrality, uh, target now. Um, and we also have little regulatory control over, uh, large point sources. For instance, are regulated under CAP and Trade. Um, and we just don't have the same incentives and, um, options for reducing point source emissions that we do, for instance, for reducing vehicle miles traveled. And, um, that would mean that new industrial development hurts our ability to meet cap targets. Like if we got a new industrial point source, we'd have to count that against our, um, progress on our cap. So, uh, those are some of the reasons that they were excluded from the inventory. Also, that's just very typical of other California caps. Um, and then, Michael, did you have stuff to add?
Yeah, um, we only found one cap that, uh, includes industrial sources. It's the, um, cap for LA County. And, and so this is the, kind of the accepted methodology is to not include industrial point sources. We, we're getting public comment that questions that decision. And, and the cap has been written in a way that it leaves it kind of open-ended. Is, we, we didn't want to finalize the debate without having the debate occur. And so we, uh, we intend to bring this issue up in the EIR and evaluate it robustly through the alternatives analysis and provide some really good, um, material for our, the decision makers.
All right. Set your.
Great. With that, I mean, I, then I would definitely, uh, personally support excluding the industrial point sources. I just wasn't sure if it maybe would be a disincentive for, you know, like a new industry, green industry.
I can add, so a good example of this is when AB 939 came in and there is a requirement to reduce your disposal to the landfill by 50%. There are local entities here that had ash facilities that disposed a significant amount of ash into the landfill. And because the benchmark year, I believe, was, may have been 1992, I bet, 1990 as well. Um, they were already meeting that target. And so it really disincentivized them from implementing mandatory garbage, cycling ordinances and those type of things because they were already in compliance with that mandate. And I think this kind of goes along with that, um, thought process. Um, because we're automatically receiving a huge reduction just because of the economy and what's happened between the benchmark year and now.
All right.
Yeah.
Do you have another question?
Yeah, but I can let someone else have a question. Go for it.
Councilmember Bauer, do you, are you going to do a happy dance first? Because I know you were so happy that this finally.
Yeah, I am very happy.
Want to see it?
I'm not happy quite yet.
Okay.
I, I appreciate your work, um, and, and staff's work on this. And knowing the SEQA process and not wanting to sound, you know, doom and gloom, but we, we have limited time. And as a scientist, you know, this is all, this is all we talk about. And so I guess my question is, can we get it done faster? Can we get the EIR done in less than a year, you know, so that we can get to implementation? We, I mean, I guess we can start implementing, but, you know, having the SEQA done is a really crucial component. What do you think?
You know, there's, uh, a lot of pieces of the puzzle that have been, um, put in place already. The funding is there. Uh, we've got, um, we've got some consultants that are amazing at doing the work that they need to do. And the, the measures in the cap are, um, they're, on the face of it, don't involve a lot of, um, environmental impacts. In fact, a lot of them arguably are going to have, um, positive environmental impacts. And, and so it, the EIR could right itself in a lot of ways and that'll speed up the process.
All right. I thought I saw a bunch of hands go up, but Councilmember Castellano, back to you.
Well, I was going to ask similar, you know, there's nothing in here to stop a city from speeding up some of these, like we, like the electrification of new construction or something, though the deadline would be 2030. We could do that next week or, you know, if we wanted, for example. No pressure.
Yeah, I asked that question and really, you know, our, in, our, we inventoried in 2015. RCA is working on a 2020 inventory, but anything we've done since 2015 counts, will, will show up as a reduction. Um, so anything we're doing now gets counted towards our, our cap goals. And, um, our electrification target is, uh, for, assumes a lot of new houses get built that are all electric, which means that we should address that quickly if that's going to be part of our cap measures um, so that we can start implementing it now, um, as new houses come in.
Sweet. And then one last question I want to ask really quickly. I, the, the yard equipment, I was shocked, um, at the emissions of yard, yard equipment. And so I'm kind of curious if like we could develop a pilot project, like at the golf course or something.
Uh, we can definitely look into that. Um, the golf course is run by the nonprofit. Um, we have reduced, I would say that the technology related to mowers and maintaining a golf course would be pretty, it, it's not there yet. I think something within our parks division, um, would likely happen sooner than the, the golf course because golf course is a little technical.
All right. Councilmember Moulton?
Oh, I just actually had a couple of questions. Uh, you said that hopefully we would have another workshop in Eureka. When maybe?
Yeah, we definitely are having another workshop and this public review draft turnaround time was so quick. It just didn't lend itself to one during this month, but, um, definitely during the environmental review process.
If somebody has something substantive to say before that process, because we want to get it pretty solid before you start that because then it gets expensive from there, right? So by June the 7th, if somebody has something really important to say, they should get their comments in. Um, so the workshop will be after that, you say? After June 7th?
Yeah, I mean, unless we bring it back to council at their, uh, there's June 7th, meaning I don't know if there's time for a workshop.
But people still have the opportunity to. But people still have the opportunity to comment before then. Well, I have a copy of this. Where can the public get a copy of this?
Michael, did you want to answer that?
Sure. Yeah, Humboldtgov.org. And if you put the, into the search bar there, Climate Action Plan, it'll take you right to the website. We have a webpage dedicated exclusively to the Climate Action Plan.
Awesome, thank you. I feel like this is one of those things where in a year we're going to start, or, you know, in next week, we're going to start talking about electrifying homes or, you know, changing policies. And this is the, now is the time when people should be looking at it and making their concerns known before we start the expensive part of this process. Thank you.
All right, was that it? Was that your question? All right, Councilmember Royo, did I see your hand up at one point?
I basically have, I can just do it all once we take public comment. I feel like I can come back to it all.
All right, so we're still on questions? Okay.
I just wanted clarification on the implementation. Are there things that we can start, like tomorrow?
Yeah, there's nothing in the way of us getting started.
We've also, a bunch of the stuff we're already doing is in there, you know, like we're already working on building trails and we're already working on waste diversion to get to zero waste. And we're thinking about an e-scooter program. That's one of the measures is the e-biker, e-scooter program. So there's a bunch of stuff that we're already doing now. And then we can definitely start implementing other measures now too and it'll count towards progress on the cap.
So this may be for the city manager, but the housing that we've got going now, like the Link Project and the Danco Project, things that are coming forward, are we, are they having to be electric or?
Not currently. Not currently. I don't think we can meet Councilmember Castellano's guidelines with changing our building code. But I mean, we can, right now, we go off the state building code. I don't know what the year is that electrification is required, but we can fast-track that and have it done sooner than later, just by ordinance if council elects to do that.
And I'm curious about incentive, because it's not already approved, if we can, there's some kind of incentivizing we could do to make sure that happens. Just a thought.
Yeah, we can look into that.
All right. Is that all the questions? Then I will open it up to public comment.
Okay, I'm Will Zerlang. Didn't plan to speak on this, but I didn't even know we were going to talk about this tonight. So real quick, grew up in Humboldt County. Family's been here since eighteen seventy-something. I'm a Eureka boy, grew up in Eureka. But I just wanted to just let you guys know a little bit. This is great. Don't get me wrong. The cap is awesome. I'm all for solar. I'm all for environmental building. But to implement electrifying a home, like, in the next five years in Humboldt County, it's not even feasible. So I think you guys should just start to kind of wrap your heads around that just a little bit, like, the cost of this to builders, the cost of this to people building homes and homeowners is going to be significant and you're going to see a big impact on that too. So I just, as I listen to you guys talk and it all sounds magical and amazing and I'm, you know, and I support these things. I mean, I'm a builder. I'm required to put solar panels on my homes. I'm putting as many electrical heating systems in as I possibly can. I mean, we are already, as builders, required Title 24 by California State Building Codes to install solar panels, to install high-efficiency gas furnaces and hot water heaters. Hot water heaters currently are not even up to speed in the United States to fully function more efficiently than a gas hot water heater. So the technology is not even quite there yet. And I just think that this is something that you guys should know when you're, you know, dreaming. Because a lot of it is dreaming and not saying that it's not going to happen because it's going to happen. And again, I'm not opposed to this cap, but I just think it's information that, you know, do your research and understand because that's important. It's important that, and as you initiate, every one of these things is going to increase building costs, not to mention other things we're going to talk about tonight, okay? And building costs now are extremely high. Permit costs are extremely high, okay? Title 24 compliance is astronomical. Building a home today takes literally twice as long as it would take me to build one with my dad in the eighties or the nineties because of this stuff. So I'm just going to just put that out there on your guys' radar and, yeah, thanks for all the work on the cap.
Thanks.
Good evening, councilmembers, staff, everybody. My name's Paul Hagan. I'm an environmental attorney. I live in Arcata. I live in Humboldt County as well, obviously. I was a deputy city attorney for Eureka for about a year, so I've spent time in city council chambers here. I'm here to speak to you about the Climate Action Plan. I have a lot of experience in the area of environmental law. I've been practicing at working in law offices, doing environmental law since nineteen eighty-nine, and I've lived in Humboldt County since nineteen ninety-nine. Before I go any further, I'd like to commend you on what you do. I'd like to put a bit of a stark contrast between my remarks and those some earlier. I'm here to commend you on your public service. I've had a lot of governmental offices in my career, including here in Humboldt County, served in various positions and offices, working for the government at different levels, and it's very difficult to do. And I find it difficult to sit and listen to people who don't understand the sacrifices that you make and take it a task for things that you don't deserve. So I commend you for your service and I'm asking you to look at this Climate Action Plan now. I believe in government. I believe in local government very much. And this Climate Action Plan is very significant. Why? We've got seven municipalities in Humboldt County and we've got the county government. So we've got eight local governments. Of all the powers that local government have, the greatest is land use. I was a city, I was a planning commissioner on the City of Arcata's Planning Commission for nine years, so I know what planning is about. I've done a lot of SEQA work. I have a lot of environmental law experience. So of all the powers in the city or the county, land use is the greatest. And this Climate Action Plan is based mainly on land use because that's your greatest power. And that's why you've got the GHG stuff in there and not the industrial point sources so much because it's regulated by the Air Quality Management District. That's the distinction there. There's two things that I really want to put out to you in addressing you right now. One is what I just mentioned is that your main, the biggest power that you have is land use authority and you give it to your planning commission. You don't have any other type of delegation like that in your structure. And so you've really got a lot of options to change things for the future here in your city and in your county. The second thing that I'd like to point out to you is I'd like you to think big. This is really why I'd like you, what I'd like to get you to understand. It's more than just the GHG things that are within your purview or the land use authority or anything else within the City of Eureka or the other local jurisdictions. We have an enormous offshore wind component coming in off the county here. Within the next few years, we've got a lot of other things going on and time is not on our side. If you look in the plan on the objective four point three point two, what does it tell you to do? It's more meaningful to think of the CHP as a vision for a positive technological and land use changes. It's bigger than your land use. And then the last thing I'd commend you to is your own energy committee's recommendations, six and seven, that you can't afford to spend more time aiming for perfection. So please give it your due consideration and I appreciate your work very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else here about this item or do we have anybody online?
We'll begin with Ash. Please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you.
Okay. I know there's a lot of urgency around the climate change thing. I mean, my uncle, he has a beach house down in Santa Cruz and he totally believes in climate change, but I can tell you one thing, he's not in a rush to sell his beach house. So how fast are the ocean levels going to rise? I don't know. You know, Barack Obama, he just bought a beach house. Many other politicians have also, you know, done it. And just with the state's whole push for, you know, electric vehicles for everyone, like it might kind of be put in the cart before the horse and just like infrastructure-wise. At the same time, we're, you know, tearing a bunch of dams out of our river that produce power and we're not really, you know, building new things or new green things. I mean, is there any research into what is currently producing our power that's powering our green vehicles? I mean, I know our backup facility, when we go into island mode, that runs on diesel, right? Like locally here? And you know exactly what, you know, when we're not in island mode, where most of our power comes, what fuels it actually that, you know, runs these green vehicles? And then also just like for the environmental impact, like for the windmills, you know, for instance, they require petroleum grease to spin. And, you know, they have a shelf life and they have to, you know, just get pretty much thrown away once they're done and they don't work anymore. And also, you know, you look at batteries and there's like, you know, kids in third world countries being paid like cents on the dollar to work in, you know, giant strip mines. And is that sustainable for everybody? And those also have, you know, lifespans where they expire. So what about the environmental impact? Like what's the plan for battery disposal, windmill disposal? And it would really be good if not, if it wasn't just, you know, looking into the, you know, how much can we save or, you know, how much, you know, carbon footprint can we save by having these things? But what is the total carbon footprint from, you know, building all these things also? Yeah. So that's pretty much all I have to say. I'm just, it would be really great if we could look into these aspects also. Then, wait, one more thing. Like the cost of electric vehicles, like, do you know any, like how many regular people working, you know, minimum wage jobs in Eureka can afford a sixty thousand dollar car? Or are they going to be forced to be riding around on little, the rent-a-e-scooters I've seen that start popping up that just get littered around? Just as the other gentleman asked...
Thank you very much.
Mentioned with the housing. Okay, thanks, bye.
Our next speaker, their phone number ends in seven four two three.
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Seaman and the council members. My name is Ryan Rice with Humboldt Prosperity Alliance. Today I come to you and encourage the council to specifically request that Humboldt County make certain corrections and changes to the cap before proceeding with work on the draft environmental review document. Number one, first, the nineteen ninety GHG inventory used in the cap to set the reduction goal does not accurately reflect actual historic emissions in Humboldt County. Industrial point sources are excluded from the nineteen ninety inventory as you have mentioned. The cap acknowledges that point source emissions were excluded because the state target would be reached without any new local programs. This elevated baseline has the effect of creating an elevated burden. While we need to strive to make state requirements, we do not want to unnecessarily create pitfalls that will impair our county's ability to grow and adapt, right? The cap should not modify the map to create an artificially high standard for our community to meet. The statewide goal of reducing GHG emissions to forty percent below nineteen ninety level is the proper standard. We request that the cap use the actual nineteen ninety GHG emissions in the inventory by including industrial point sources. Number two, we request that the two thousand fifteen GHG inventory, which is the premise for new reduction measures, be updated to a more recent year. The past seven years, changes in transportation, energy, dairy, and other sectors have reduced GHG emissions in Humboldt County. The current inventory should reflect present-day conditions. Third, we request that the cap develop a more accurate estimate of livestock GHG emissions by using the proper methodology. The cap identifies livestock is contributing thirteen percent of the county's current GHG emissions. However, this figure was estimated using an old methodology called GWP one hundred, even though research from the UC Davis Clear Center and leading climate scientists suggest using new methodology, GWP, which more accurately calculates methane emissions from livestock. Fourth, we request that the carbon sequestration be quantified and incorporated into the cap. The cap acknowledges that carbon sequestration can and does occur in our region, but does not quantify sequestration. Humboldt County is a predominantly rural landscape with a tremendous amount of carbon sequestration occurring, which should be quantified into the cap as well. Finally, we request that those developing the cap engage the rural community of Humboldt and revise the cap to more accurately reflect the rural nature. It is essential that the cap adequately recognize the rural nature of Humboldt County and the unique needs of its rural residents. Many of the approaches and measures described in the cap...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Colin Fisk.
Good evening again, may I, councilmembers. Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. The draft cap provides a strong foundation for our continuing and future action to address the climate crisis. We do, of course, have improvements we'd like to see to it and we look forward to engaging on those issues during the SEQA process and the deliberations which follow, which I think is the appropriate way to go. As you, as you heard, this cap has been, you know, under construction, so to speak, for almost four years already. Target year is twenty thirty, which is getting closer by the day. And there really is no time to spare in addressing these issues and having a firm plan in place and implementing it. So we strongly encourage you to move this forward to the SEQA process tonight and we can continue to iterate and improve on it as we go. And I also just want to personally address one of the earlier ones to say that, in fact, there are already lots of, in Humboldt County, including my own, it's perfectly feasible. And all-electric new construction is actually cheaper than running gas lines. So, you know, a lot of this stuff is, I would say, all of the stuff that we need to do is feasible with the technology that's available today and we just need to start doing it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Deborah Dukes.
Hi. When Councilmember Bauer starts his happy dance, I hope I get to join in. I'm thrilled that the cap, the draft cap is finally available. I'm chair of the Eureka Energy Committee and I really appreciated the previous speaker who alluded to our comment that we can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And also that we don't need to start, or we don't need to wait for the cap to be formally adopted before starting the process that we need to get going on this. It's been way too long. I too have an all-electric house and drive an electric car and I'm a retired teacher. I'm not rich, but I put my money where my mouth is. I think that's what the city needs to do. And the sooner we get started on this, the better for everybody. I too would like to commend the entire council, city staff. Y'all do a great job and I too appreciate that you can just sit there and take so much. Anyway, thank you and please adopt the draft cap and let's get on to the EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any others?
We have one more. One more speaker, phone ending in zero three two six.
Hi, I'm Charles Wilson. This climate change has been happening for years and years and years. I remember the, back in nineteen fifty, the B.C., glacier had receded one mile and then I saw it ten years later and it had receded another mile. In nineteen forty, the average rainfall in LA was thirteen point four three. Ten years later, after they had a seven-year drought and a seven, nine-year drought and eleven-year drought type thing from the scientists, it was about ten and a half. We, the... We, the purpose of the climate change is to make few people feel guilty so they can create a crisis so that they can pass laws to force people to do things. What I see on, and little things like on the bike, wait, let's get the trails going, get people walking. But you don't realize Caltrans has made it illegal to walk between any community in Humboldt County. They put up their signs saying pedestrian prohibited to restrict their liability. You have your tree planting, oh, I planted six, 2,000 trees down in LA. They're sacred down there. We got a lot more trees than that. We don't need to, uh, have a separate program to try to do that. Your renewable, your electricity has to come from somewhere. I don't know what you're thinking of is where you're going to get all this electricity. It has to be produced and it creates pollutants and stuff like that. So I don't think you have really, uh, it's just after going through 60 years of, uh, reading all these environmental impact reports and all that kind of stuff. My general conclusion in Humboldt County, nobody reads what they wrote. They write down something and it, even if it's illogical or incorrect or upside down, it's still produced and you believe it. And I, it's just, just like on the Redwood National Park stuff where the bypass there, they had the posting 30 mile an hour speed limit size was, uh, more devastating than to having the 130 million dollar, uh, bypass which had 22, uh, slopes, which all failed as well, at least one or more times. But you know, the thing is you gotta think that this is a political thing, not a scientific thing. I don't, after seeing all this stuff that they're doing there, uh, it doesn't seem like it has that much validity. In 1949, they had, they wanted to.
Thank you very much. That's your three minutes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, bye bye. I can't.
Was, was that our last caller? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back for comments. Uh, council member Arroyo, we'll start with you.
Great, I'll try to make it speedy. But I have a few that I wrote down. So by and large, I really applaud this effort and I see it as a very robust plan. I have, um, I, I hear this, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good thing. So I, I'm not going to critique it to death. I just have a few comments. So, um, I, I want to make sure everyone who's watching really pays attention to appendix E5, which is really about the implementation and monitoring objectives. And I think as we come up with more detailed implementation plan for the city of Eureka, you know, we'll, we'll be able to get into the nitty gritty of what each of these really mean for us. Um, and I look forward to doing that soon and hope that we can expedite that. The, um, one of the things that I specifically have feedback about is, um, the transit ridership piece, item, let's see, strategy 2.9. While I overall love that there's emphasis placed on transit, I, I think it makes more sense to increase, to have a target of an increase in ridership rather than an increase in just the number of stops. So there's not a goal to, there's a goal to increase number of transit stops, to subsidize passes and then to like increase transit frequency and speed. So we want transit to be faster, great. I, I agree with that. We've, um, but a lot of community feedback around transit, um, and I am the board chair for the Humboldt Transit Authority, so I hear a lot of this, is around, um, making transit more convenient for people, but not necessarily, that doesn't necessarily mean an increase in the number of stops. So while I think it's great to increase stops, we have 23 new stops in here. We currently have 93 within Eureka City limits. So that's a pretty significant increase in the, the number of stops. And people already about, um, the Eureka Transit routes being difficult to ride because of the number of stops. So we need some efficiency there, um, to be achieved. So people want to use the, the transit service. So to just be focusing on number of stops to me, um, isn't the right metric. So I'd like to suggest that we instead, um, increase ridership, uh, set a target for that. It needs to be a minimum of 10%, but it'd be great if it was, uh, you know, there's different ridership for different routes, but if we could just set, you know, whatever increased percentage we want to see, that would be ideal. The, the plan to, from what I looked at, doesn't include a relatively new program. We have a county and city bus pass for employees, um, that I think should be featured in there. And is it? I saw that there were subsidized transit passes, uh, for the community, but I didn't see the, okay, it is, okay, great. I think it's.
I noticed it didn't call out Eureka though, so we can add that in there.
Yeah, I didn't see it under the, um, uh, implementation and monitoring objectives. So that sounds good. I, I, yeah, I just really want to see us bring our implementation measures forward quickly and talk about them as a council and, um, commit to some of them right away. Uh, I am really interested in the, the natural and working lands inventory that this calls for. And, um, and I'm similarly very interested in all of the unqualified measures that are relying on some of the data that we haven't yet collected. So I don't think that that should keep anything from moving forward. But I do really hope that we receive that information, um, especially, you know, I guess it really doesn't pertain to Eureka as much, um, but I, I think when it comes to wetlands and some of the work we're doing there, we're, we're kind of maybe not getting the full picture. Adaptive management, the plan has just a couple of short sentences saying, we'll use adaptive management uh, if we don't meet any of our goals. And I guess I'm concerned about that. Again, I don't want it to get in the way of us moving forward, but I feel like the, the way that it's phrased gives us a pass, um, that I, I would rather not give ourselves, but I also understand that this is a very robust and multifaceted plan and that we might not be able to meet all our implementation objectives. But I, I would personally prefer the language to be a little stronger in that section about, um, our intentions. And then, um, there's some reference to a cap coordinator and I was just wondering who that is, who's responsible for annual reporting. Do you?
So there, the plan anticipates hiring a cap coordinator.
Gotcha, okay. Sure.
Yeah, we do have funding from the REAP program, uh, 35,000 bucks to hire a program coordinator before or during the environmental review process. That'll get us, um, a little bit down the road, but, um, we'll need to supplement that.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't see that in there. Thank you. Um, and then lastly, um, I mean, there's a lot of little tiny things that I feel like I, I'm interested in, but I don't need to use our meeting time in. So maybe I could reach out later. But the cap consistency checklist for developers, I think this is a really great tool. I just, um, I see that it's something that, uh, what the, what the plan is for the development of appendix F.
Yeah, there, there are some ways that these documents are a little rougher on the edges. And, um, with the, the funding that we've got, we'll be able to polish them up.
Okay, thank you. From one planner to another, I applaud your efforts on this document. It's extremely robust and yeah, I just, if we're going to give developers the opportunity to self-certify, which I think is great. Minimizing staffing impact, I just want to see that, you know, we have. I, I would like the chance to comment on that if, if there's still time. Um, but it sounds like this might be developed after, as an appendix later. Is that, is that so?
You're, you're talking about the checklist?
Yes.
Yeah. That'll be a, a key focus of our, uh, public engagement.
Council member Molten, did you have, did you have your hand up before? All right, council member Castellana, do you have any comments? I thought I saw all the hands go up, so I was trying to remember.
I think this is a great document. But yeah, I'm happy to go for, I think I can email any major comments. Though since, since members of the school board are here and waiting, I thought that there was an interesting fact in there that 59% of all transportation, young people going to school is in, uh, like single use, not single use, anyway, like a solo rider, you know, that kind of event. Sorry, I'm not saying that right at all, but I think you get what I mean. Anyway.
Yeah. Council member Bauer.
No, I just want to thank our energy commission, um, for the, the great, uh, letter of recommendation on the, on the cap. And I'll say that, um, towards the bottom there, requested action that to hire a director of sustainability and energy for the city of Eureka, I fully support that. And I think it would be helpful for us in the future as we implement, um, the cap to have somebody that's dedicated to, um, working on, on energy efficiency. You know, all these different things that are important components of the plan. So I hope we look at that in the future. And thanks again, Michael, for, for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All right, did you get, oh, go ahead.
I, I just want to also thank the energy committee and draw attention to all, all four of the recommendations that they made, I think are, are, um, very in line with my thinking. Um, and I like the emphasis on, um, decision-making thresholds like pro forma codes and, um, you know, trying to empower staff, um, to make decisions, um, that support the cap. And I, I think that's great. We, we don't need to be, I think our staff are on it. They understand where we're going with this. We have an amazing staff and I would love to create a framework for implementation for the city of Eureka that empowers staff and doesn't require so much of that to come to us. Which, for the reason that that prolongs the process, uh, and I think our staff are, they get it and can do a great job.
All right, do y'all have the, uh, direction that you need from us? I believe that's all we're doing is providing comments, so. Thank you very much.
Thank, thanks a lot.
And now we're going to move on to the next item for our very, very patient school district. And I'm going to start by asking city manager Slattery to, um.
Thank you again, mayor, and good evening again, mayor and council. I'd also like to thank the very patient Eureka City Schools, uh, staff and board members for holding out for this period of time. Thank you.
And public commenters, just saying.
And public commenters, yes. So, um, at the last council meeting, um, prior to that council meeting, each of our council members received a letter from Eureka City Schools describing, uh, the potential implementation of a development fee. I have brought, um, Eureka City School Superintendent Van Vleek here to provide a report that was requested on that. But prior to, um, Superintendent Van Vleek coming up here, I just would like to, um, thank them about their transparency related to these fees. We are in a two by two with, um, staff and board members. And this has been discussed for a few months now. And, um, we appreciate the transparency and the ability to comment. That I also know that they've reached out to developers and other stakeholders interested in this fee and had discussions with them. So, um, with that, I'd like to bring up Superintendent Van Vleek to provide a short report on the reasoning behind these fees, um, uh, what they will be and how it will benefit the school and, and their facilities and answer any questions you guys may have.
All right, good evening. First, I want to start off by introducing who I have with me. Have our board president, Lisa Olivier, also trustee Susan Johnson, and then Paul Ziegler, uh, my assistant superintendent of business services. So, uh, happy to be here this evening, uh, to talk with you a little bit about this. I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for, so, uh, I'll take a shot in the dark. And then of course, I'm sure you'll have lots of questions that, uh, I will do my best to answer. And I brought Paul with me to help me out on some of the specifics, uh, if I can, uh, come up with a great answer for you. So a couple of things that, uh, wanted to call to your attention. I'm here on behalf of Eureka City Schools in the direction of the board, uh, who asked staff to, uh, look in the development, uh, of developer fees. And, and the rationale behind that is we have a grant that we're applying for, uh, from the state of California to bring in $5.6 million specifically to build eight new classrooms to accommodate preschool. I know, uh, Mayor Susan Seaman, Mayor, I always call you Susan, so I got to get it correct. So Mayor Seaman, I know that, uh, early childhood education is very important to you and I know that's been, uh, a lot of work that you focused on. And this is actually more housing specifically for the preschoolers. And also as California transitions to the four-year-old transitional kindergarten for all, it's an increased need for facilities for our schools. And to put that in perspective, uh, right now, a preschool classroom or transitional kindergarten classroom or a kindergarten classroom has to follow what's called Title V. Classroom as opposed to the traditional 960 square foot classroom. And as we move forward and looking at that, uh, right now, we have 60 transitional kindergarteners in our classrooms because it's a three-month window only of four-year-olds, uh, that qualify for transitional kindergarten. As that expands out by the state of California's direction to a full year of transitional kindergarten for students, that size will go from 60 students to 240 students. And we simply do not have the Title V facilities to accommodate that increase of students that we'll have inside of our classrooms. And so this is an opportunity for Eureka City Schools to really capitalize on bringing dollars from Sacramento here locally at 100% their cost. Now that comes with a caveat and that's the piece that's kind of difficult and that's the developer fees. And I want to provide a little bit of history about developer fees, where they came from, how long they've been around and what the state's rationale is for developer fees. So, uh, you all probably remember Prop 13. Uh, Prop 13 was a major shift in property taxes and it was actually devastating for schools, uh, in the late seventies and it really, the impact started coming in the eighties. And that's when school districts locally, in fact, as early as 1979, started implementing developer fees in their county. In 1986, the state jumped in and said, uh, we want to regulate these developer fees because as of right now, it's not regulated. So in 1986 is when the state allocation board officially implemented developer fees for the state of California and allowed it up to local school districts on whether or not they wanted to impose developer fees. Almost all the state of California has imposed developer fees. Humboldt County is a little bit unique in that, in that we have not for most school districts. However, there are a couple of school districts in Humboldt County who have and who have for an extended amount of time. That's Fortuna Elementary School District and also McKinleyville Union Elementary School District. They've charged developer fees for years. Uh, as you all know, I think, or maybe you don't, I'm a local. I was gone for about 20 years and I was in a school district in the Central Valley where I was the chief business official, uh, of, and we had roughly a hundred million dollar budget. And today that's almost doubled in that district and we had 13,000 students in the district. I came up here and one of the first things I realized was we weren't charging developer fees. So I talked to the board, that was in 2012, and said, we need to do a developer fee justification study that we are interested in doing as a school district, much like the rest of the state is doing. Back in 2012, I think the, the study was actually done in 2013. What it anticipated was about $20,000 per year in development at that time. And the board, uh, and, and I recommended to the board at that time, it just wasn't worth it. It didn't make any sense to do developer fees just for that. Well, things have changed quite a bit and what the developer fee justification study has said that there's an anticipated revenue of about $450,000 per year. There's an anticipated growth from the development that's projected to come in of about 42 students per year. And as we look at that, that's one side of the coin. The other side of the coin though, is the roughly $5.6 million that will be brought in purely from Sacramento with no local match on those dollars to, uh, fund these classrooms that I talked about earlier. And so with that information, the board directed me to do, uh, the developer fee study justification report. And they also directed me to be very transparent in the process and reach out to our stakeholders. And we went above and beyond. There's a very prescribed set of stakeholders that we are, uh, required to get the study out to. We went much further, much wider. We opened that breadth. Uh, in fact, we sat down with the local builders, uh, asked them into a meeting, not to convince them that they need to support developer fees because I knew that wouldn't happen. I just simply wanted them to understand the why, uh, that we're considering doing the developer fees uh, in Eureka City Schools. And, and that was the primary purpose, uh, behind that. And so with that, um, I can open it up to any questions that you all might have or, uh, any clarifications you might want.
Council member Arroyo.
I think I missed something in there. So your five point something million dollar grant, is that, um, contingent upon developer fees only? Or is it like a self-help grant where you have to raise a certain amount of match?
So, uh, great, I can clarify that. And so, uh, in the governor's budget for the 21, 22 fiscal. So, great, I can clarify that. And so in the Governor's Budget for the 2122 fiscal year, there were several, and I can't give you the exact amount, millions of dollars that were allocated specifically to transitional kinder and preschool housing. And that was tied to his grand vision of expanding preschool and expanding the transitional kinder opportunities inside of our schools. And so what you, it's a competitive grant, and what you have to do is you have to apply for it. And there's two components to the competitiveness. The first component is your poverty level inside of your district. Eureka City Schools runs about 70% poverty. And then the second component is hardship. And what hardship is financial hardship. And there's several things that you have to go through in order to qualify for financial hardship. We happen to be in the sweet spot of that as a district because of the bonds that have recently been passed out in the community. And so if you apply with just simply a high free reduced lunch rate, which is our poverty level, it's not enough. You have to have the financial hardship as well, because that's 50% of your application. So if one district comes in and qualifies for financial hardship, they will receive more points than the most poverty district in the state. And so you have to have a combination of the two. And what the state says is a part of that qualification for financial hardship is you have to be charging maximum developer fees. And the maximum developer fees are set by the state. They meet on a, I believe it's a biannual basis. It's a State Allocation Board, and they set the developer fee. So Level One developer fees is the maximum that we could be charging, and that is consistent across the whole state. And I think I'm going beyond what your question is, but you might find this interesting. Some people say, well, why the heck would San Francisco charge the same developer fee as Eureka City Schools? And the rationale behind that is, if you take a look, you've probably all seen the gym that's going in right now that's mostly constructed. That, the cost of that gym is probably more expensive here in Eureka than it would be in San Francisco. And the reason behind that, it's has to pass DSA, Division of State Architects, and it has to have prevailing wage for all the laborers. And all our materials have to be, not all of them, much of our materials have to be shipped in from out of the area. You realize most of it's built out of steel. And so that doesn't come from here. And so that really escalates the costs. And so we have the consistence of prevailing wage, the consistence of the design of the building, and the inconsistency of how we have to ship materials in. And so that's the rationale that I believe the State Allocation Board uses when they set a level developer fee across the state of California.
So it's tied only to developer fees? That that determination of hardship?
Well, developer fees is one portion of that. Another portion is your, basically, how much you've leveraged as far as bonds in your bonding capacity. That's another portion of it. And you have to have passed a bond within a certain number of previous years. And so it's it's not very often that you can qualify for hardship. We just happen to be in a good position to qualify for that. There's two other school districts in the county here who will likely qualify for that, and that's Freshwater School District and also Cutton Elementary School District. And they both are in the process of getting their developer fee justification report done right now. The reality is, this is Sacramento telling us, local government, if you want this money, you have to charge developer fees. It's, and for most school districts across the state, it's not a big deal because they're already charging that. But when you get into Humboldt County here, that's just not the normal that's happening out there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about this? All right. Then I will invite public comment.
All right, I guess that's me again. Again, my name's Will Zerling. A longtime Humboldt County resident. I am a contractor here in town. I've been building houses in Eureka my entire life. So has my dad, family before that. So we're invested in the county of Humboldt, specifically the city of Eureka. I have four kids, all in City of Eureka schools or have been City of Eureka schools. I also was, actually graduated from Arcata High, but I did grow up in Eureka. My wife is a nurse in the ICU at St. Joseph's Hospital. And, you know, the big thing that I think needs to be brought to attention here is what this is going to have, the impact this is going to have on development in the city of Eureka, as well as development in the outlying areas of the county. You know, this is the the fee, and we're, I'm going to speak mostly residential because I'm a residential contractor. Majority of what I build is new construction for middle income families in the city of Eureka. That's basically what my business does. So I'm going to give you guys an example of the permit fee increases that we're going to see here. And I know I don't have a lot of time, but essentially what you're doing is you're going to double the permit fee costs for residential construction in the city and the county outlying areas. Okay? Anything in the Eureka City District or feeder districts, freshwater, Neeland, Cutton, South Bay. So an example I have, in 2009, I built a 3,400 square foot development. I paid $1,400 for the building permit. Okay, I am in the process of a 3,400 square foot development. This is in Eureka City County, not City Building Department, but County. Very similar fees, not not much different in the building, building fees. $13,000 is about what I'm going to pay for that permit. If we add this fee, it's going to add $16,000 to that permit cost. So it's going to take that permit cost for me, a small business, from $13,000, which is over a thousand percent increase in the last 12 years already, to $29,000. So just, that's the impact it's going to immediately have. And I get it. I get it. It's, you know, the 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 money is needed to get the grant. I understand all that. So since that's the situation, you know, how are we going to handle this in the long term? Because implementing this fee on local builders is is going to slow down all of your guys' movement that you're trying to make here with increasing housing. I mean, it's it's going to have an effect on that. We're not going to be able to continue to apply for our permits and continue to build our buildings with these increased costs. Not to mention, and I'll slip this in there because I'm out of time, is, you know, families and small families that are trying to develop these ADUs, right? And they're going to have these increased costs. You guys are going to, you know, you're going to put those out of business also. So I'm glad he got 20 minutes, but you know. Somebody else got to speak.
So, and I do want to clarify too that we are not voting on this, and we don't get to. Okay, I just wanted to. And and so now I will bring it back to. Oh, do we have anybody on Zoom for comment? All right. Thank you. So now I will bring it back to Council, Councilmember Arroyo.
Yeah, I was I was going to ask that. That made me think it would be helpful to clarify the process. So what are we? What's our role here?
So my understanding would be that when we go through the building permit process, if the school board decides to implement this fee, that there would be a checkbox of of some sort that says that it would need to get approved by Eureka City Schools before they could get their permit to be put in place. And so we would implement that as a part of our building permit process.
And then how soon, I'm sorry, how soon would that happen?
I may need some help from Superintendent Van Vleek, but I think that if approved. Okay, May 19th is their consideration, and I believe it's 60 days after that. So Superintendent Van Vleek can.
Yeah, that's, so what happens is, let's say the Board takes action to pass this on. There's a couple of options that they could take. That's a public hearing for this. They can adopt it that night. It's on there as an action item. They could listen to the public comment, and they could refer it back to staff to do any type of modification to the developer fee justification report and potentially could come back on June 22nd for potential adoption. But whatever day they actually adopted, it's 60 days from that point where the developer fees would start needing to be collected. And what Miles said is accurate. Basically, there's a checkbox. They come down to the school district. They pay at the school district. We sign that off, then it comes back over here. One point, it doesn't impact Eureka City proper specifically, but I know there's a big development that you all know about that's going out in Cutton. So let's say Cutton Elementary School District decides to implement the developer fees, and Eureka City School Boards decides not to implement the developer fees at their board meeting. So for Cutton, the developer fees would still be the $4.79. So if Eureka City Schools adopts the developer fees and Cutton adopts the developer fees, that development in Cutton would still be $4.79, and the two school districts need to negotiate on who gets what portion of that $4.79. So it's important to note that just if Eureka City Schools doesn't approve this, that doesn't mean that there won't be developer fees, and it would potentially be the same price.
So my, I have one, you know, you were talking about how the developer fees are the same across the board because things are as expensive here. They're more expensive here. So to me, that's the thing that's frustrating is our developers are already paying more to build here because of all of those things that you mentioned, and now have to pay also as much as as they do in the the Bay Area. That's kind of a, it's a frustrating, it's a frustrating thing. And I'll just leave it at that. Councilmember Bergel.
Well, thank you for bringing that up because I'm curious, how did the, how did the $4.79, how did they come to that amount? And is there any way that there could be a reduction? Or does it have to be that full amount?
So I probably should have given this disclaimer upfront. I'm not a building expert, and I don't even want to pretend to be a building expert. I'm an educational expert. And so I just know the educational side of the house. Now, with that being said, and that disclaimer that's there, I will give the answer that I understand it to be, which I believe is accurate, but I just want to put that disclaimer that's out there. So the State Allocation Board meets, and they have some complex calculation that they go through to try to figure out what the impact is per square foot to school districts when building happens. And so they calculate how many students generally move into a house. They calculate how old those students are on average across the state, and they come up with this calculation, and that's where it comes. Have nothing to do with the calculation. The only thing we have anything to do with is the justification report, which says whether or not we're justified in collecting those fees. Now, as far as the reduction of the fees, yes, the fees can be charged at a lesser amount. However, in order to qualify for financial hardship, they must, and it says specifically in the application, you must be charging full, or excuse me, maximum developer fees. And so what that means is we have to charge the state Level One developer fees, and we can't pick and choose who we charge. We can't charge a lesser amount. We have to charge what the state says that must be charged.
And just to clarify that, so how long, how long does this fee have to be implemented to to meet the grant standards?
So what happens is the grant was due on April 30th, and so the grant has been turned in. And what they do is review the grants. It's what's called OPSC, Office of Public School Construction. And then they conduct an audit on the grants. And so we knew we had a little bit of time, even turning it in on April 30th. So they've acknowledged that they received it, and then they will tell us at some point, within 30, 30 days from this point, we're going to do an audit of your books. And so they take a snapshot of your books at that point, and then once they take that snapshot, it's over. So the Board can choose after that, if they wanted to, to not collect developer fees, reduce the developer fees, have exceptions for developer fees for low income housing. There's all kinds of things that they can choose at that point. But during that snapshot, it must be the maximum amount.
And the snapshot, could you just clarify that again? It's 60 days, what did you say? How long was the snapshot?
We don't know exact, well, the snapshot is one time when they look at our books. We just don't know the exact day yet of when it is that they're going to look. I would assume that it's going to be within the next several months. I would say prior to next fall. But that would just be an assumption. And the reason I give that assumption is because they need to get these dollars out of the state coffers and moving towards the districts and have districts committed to receiving those dollars.
Yeah, because I just think the larger concern is this affordable housing and these impact fees are going to really. The people that I've talked to have really talked a lot about the negative impacts that this could have on housing. And we are in dire need of housing. We're in a crisis. So those are some of my concerns.
Right. And and I would certainly acknowledge that. And I would also say that that's another thank you Sacramento. And it's happening all over the state, and the developer fees are happening all over the state as well. And so, you know, reaching out to your state legislators and talking about this is is the best way to address that, is what I would say at this point.
The state's making mandates without funding them.
Mayor Seaman, we did, Mayor Seaman, we did have someone raise their hand, and I don't know if they weren't aware to do it earlier. So we do have another public comment, if you would like to take it.
Would you like me to sit down or?
I think it's online, so if you can just stand there, nobody's gonna, won't see you.
Ms. Zerling, would you like to go ahead, please?
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate it, you guys. And I appreciate you guys having this meeting and discussing this. Obviously, I am, my husband is Will Zerling, and we are Eureka family with kids in Eureka Schools. And we absolutely believe in improving our schools, and we also feel very strongly about early childhood education. So we we do support that. My question, because I know you guys are not voting on this. This is something that is voted on by the school board. And I do understand that the grant is dependent on this. So my question for you guys is, number one, if we can just get like clarification on how this is going to be implemented permitting process, will our clients that we have that have just submitted applications for permits be surprised in August when they're hit with double the fees, when the permit is returned to them? Also, I know that McKinleyville is charging 75 cents for their developer fees. And Fortuna is charging around $2 for the developer fees. When I spoke with Fortuna earlier today, they said they had reduced those developer fees and that they are voted upon every year. So then my question would be, would that be something that we would take into consideration every year? I know that's probably more of a Eureka City School Board question. But those would be the things on my mind is, I understand that we need to do this to move on to fund these early childhood education programs. But how could we mitigate the housing crisis that we have moving forward?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And so we will continue on. I believe Councilmember Moulton had a comment.
Oh, which actually leads to my question about mitigating the potential slowdown for development. Is there any way that these fees could possibly be financed? Is there any reason written into the grant or the structure that you couldn't, especially for very large developments, finance these fees over a length of time?
From my perspective, that's not something that I've talked with the Board about, so I'll speak just from a staff's perspective. I think that's very feasible. I think that there is, I'm not aware of anything in the statute that says you must collect it on a certain day. I think the statute just says that you need to collect it. And so I think there's options out there of low to no interest rates as far as the collection of the developer fees. Yes.
I feel like that could be helpful.
Thank you. Councilmember Arroyo.
Thank you. This is, this is a lot to unpack. So I I am curious about the structure of the developer fees. My understanding is that there are often multiple levels of developer fees, and then there are, they applied to both residential and commercial construction, but with certain exclusions, but that depends on the district. So at least in my research, it seemed like there were a lot of different ways to structure this. So what, what is your, what are you planning to bring forward?
So in the state, not to get too deep in the weeds, there's what's called Level One, Level Two, and Level Three developer fees. And as you go up to Level Two and Level Three developer fees, the the prices actually get higher. Right now, we don't even qualify to collect Level Two or Level Three, nor do we have an interest in even looking at. Nor is that a slippery slope that we're looking to go to. That generally happens when there's state budget crisis issues in districts that have huge developments going on, and there's no other choices. So that's not what the state considers for us maximum developer fees anyways. So Level One is the maximum for us. And as far as the difference between residential and commercial, so what I would assume the State Allocation Board took into account when they came up with the different $4.79 per square foot for residential was, commercial doesn't house students. But there is an impact there, I assume, based on the Allen Bill, which allows folks that work inside the boundaries of a district to have their children attend the schools inside that district. And so that's my assumption of the nexus of the 78 cents per square foot and why they calculate that potential impact there. But again, educational expert, not building expert.
And then it looks like they go up incrementally, like the the, some state board levies a new, determines what the rate should be. So would these go up incrementally in accordance with the state, new state numbers every two? So would these go up incrementally in accordance with the state, um, new state numbers every two years when they do their updates?
So that's correct. They do a biannual meeting. And, uh, Eureka City Schools is required to have a biannual meeting as well to adopt the, uh, developer fees each time. I'm actually going to encourage, especially in the beginning here, that the board meet annually to take a look at the developer fees. Uh, is it stifling housing? Is there a bigger impact than what, what, what the 5.6 million, uh, coming into, uh, the district? Um, you know, so there's the possibility of reducing them at that point. Um, the State Allocation Board, uh, certainly increases them with inflation each time. There is no requirement of a school district to charge the maximum developer fees unless, uh, it's required in some application like this for hardship, uh, financing.
Okay. I swear I just have one more. Can I just keep going? So I, I appreciate the effort to consider financing or phasing payments or something like that, um, so that people can, can, um, can manage it. Um, I, I did want to throw out there and just totally spitballing here. Would your district consider something like exempting people who have paid developer fees for some period of time from a property tax increase in the future? Or some other means of, um, incentivizing development while, you know, and I mean, just sort of a, a period of time, not, not forever. Uh, because I know property tax is extremely important as well.
So, um, I need, try to make this answer, uh, as short as I possibly can. So the way school district funding works is, um, almost all the school districts in the state of California are not what's called a basic aid school district. A basic aid school district is a district like when you get down into Los Gatos, uh, Napa, St. Helena, where property values are extremely high. And that means that the school district is purely funded by property taxes. Here, we run about 50% funding by property tax somewhere in that neighborhood. Don't quote me on the exact number, but it's close to that. And the rest is what's called state aid. And so the state would not allow us, nor do we have any authority to do anything with property tax at all. And so as property tax fluctuates, uh, here in the county and it generally fluctuates up, especially when people sell their houses and lose their Prop 13 protection. Uh, it has absolutely no impact on the school district at all. That has an impact on the state because it would reduce the state share of what the school district is funded.
So if you are to consider a property tax increase that's specific to schools, um, in the district, is that something you do? I mean, I.
No.
No, that's not possible.
What we do are bonds. Uh, we do what's called general obligation bonds.
Yes.
And in a general obligation bond, uh, for a unified school district, uh, you can, uh, charge up to a certain number of dollars per hundred thousand of assessed value. That's how we have done, uh, the most recent renovations of our schools. The most recent bond passed was a, uh, just under $20 million bond, uh, specifically earmarked for the Albee Stadium project, which is, you know, one of those things that actually benefits the city as well because the culvert that's failing that goes underneath the project is city drainage. And so that is something that the school district is funding, the redoing of the city drainage that's down there. So it benefits the whole community, uh, not just Eureka City Schools. And then the funding mechanism for that comes off of a, and you all see it on your property taxes. It'll say general obligation bond, uh, and then it'll give a dollar amount. And we've actually been able to come in under the promised dollar amount per hundred thousand from where we did the original general obligation bond election.
This is fascinating detail. I, I guess, uh, my, 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 it, it inspires a different question, which is, is there a way to ease the payment burden for people in some other way if they create new development? Like if they, if I, I just bought a property, this is true. I want to build a, a mother-in-law unit on it, an additional unit on it. If I'm able to do that and, you know, I go through with this project and I add housing in Eureka. And I pay quite a bit in developer fees and that benefits the district. Is there any way where I could have any kind of payment relief in the future associated with that? Besides just, uh, you know, financing my payments over time?
So the district doesn't have anything to do really with anything of that property beyond that point. And so pretty much all the billing at that point is the city. Um, and so that would really be the only relief that would be there that I'm aware of. I, I'm open to suggestions, but I'm.
I'd thank you for thinking this through with me. It's very helpful. Um, yeah.
I think in the instance that you're talking about, let's say your property value goes up. I think what Ben and Ben Buck is saying, while that may go up and the county may collect more property tax for that, all that does is it, while it adds to the property tax, they only still get 50% from the state. That'll help out the state and defer their costs that they have to pay for them to exist. But it's not going to, you know, they don't have discretion over that.
Right. Doesn't sound like there's a mechanism for this besides the financing of the payments. Um, I'm just, I was, I was digging for it, but it's not there. Okay. Thank you.
I will say that it's, it's nice that the board will consider an annual review of this because I think at that point in time, you know, if it's done on an annual basis, there'll be a lot more information that comes from this and, and where we're at with housing. The impact, the associated impact, and there could be discussions with them on an annual basis at least.
I have a question that I'll get. Councilmember Castellano and then Councilmember Bergel. It's just a clarification. Is this just for new development? Or if you are, uh, doing renovations on a place, but you're not changing the square footage?
So there is no impact or development fee for square footage that already exists.
Okay.
Um, so if you add on to your house and put additional square footage, yes, that would be.
Just on the additional.
Right.
Okay. Cause we're working on that through the visioning and just restoring some of our older homes. So maybe at least they'll be able to avoid some of that. So Councilmember Castellano.
Firstly, thank, thank you for being here. Thanks to, you know, Susan and Lisa and Paul for being here. Um, you know, and I realize we don't determine what you do. So, um, but I, I just want to express, I, I really appreciate that, you know, from a staff perspective. And there's an interest in, you know, looking at this annually and, you know, and hopefully we can work together to submit reports so we know how it's impacted, you know, housing production. And, and, you know, and I just appreciate that you, you're considerate of that. And then also, um, I do think that, uh, a financing option could be useful, especially for some of our smaller developers, you know, who just don't have the capacity. You know, I think on council, we want to see these small, smaller businesses continue to thrive and survive in this kind of shifting climate. And I, I do think that the, the larger folks might be able to kind of weather this. But I would be, you know, just concerned about the, the more like local mom and pops level of business. So, yeah, just thanks, thanks for considering that.
And, and just as you talk about that, um, a thought popped into my mind and it's dangerous when I'm standing at the podium. But, uh, probably the, the best mechanism for that would be that as soon as a family purchases the house, that would be the mechanism for when those developer fees would be due for all developers or something like that. So in effect, the, the cost won't be out of their pocket at that particular point. It doesn't absolve the fact that we would be charging developer fees and that gets passed on to the families. But it certainly makes it easier for a small business to be able to bridge that.
Councilmember Bergel.
I was just curious at your annual reviews, would there be the availability for public comment? Public input on those decisions being moving forward?
Absolutely. We're governed by the Brown Act, just as you are. And, uh, so public comment would be there. It would be agenda's 72 hour notice for all the agendas. Uh, actually, I believe, at least on the biannual, you have to have a public hearing. So it would probably have the longer, uh, notice for the public hearing as well.
All right. Any other comments on this? Oh, we do have two. Councilmember Moulton and then Councilmember Oreo.
I actually just wanted to add my gratitude. I really appreciate that you've come here tonight, even though we're very informative and I appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
And all of you as well.
Councilmember Oreo.
This one's actually really important to me. Um, the demolition credit idea. So if someone is buying a very decrepit place and demoing it and rebuilding in its footprint, I think that's really good for Eureka. It seems like other jurisdictions do a demolition credit. Um, what are your thoughts on that? Have you?
Same for developer fees. So if you buy a lot that has a thousand square foot house on it and you put a thousand square foot house back on it.
Gotcha.
1,500 square foot house back on that lot, then it's a $500, or excuse me, uh, uh, 500 square foot, uh, cost of developer fees.
That's great to know because I think there are a lot of instances where that will be done to rehab housing. So thank you.
So your ADU just became a remodel? Is that what you're saying?
Sorry. I wasn't trying to think about how I could get advantage out of this. I was just thinking and thinking through my example, but yes, thank you very much. I echo that.
All right. And I will also echo what they said. Thank you for coming out, um, and then waiting and, and doing this.
Past my bedtime indeed.
Um, it was very informative and, uh, a hard decision that I'm, you know, I'm glad we don't have to make this hard decision. So thanks.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So it is 9:30. Does anybody want to make a motion to? We have several items on the agenda. I do know that we want to, I think we might have a letter that needs some attention. Um, we have a meeting next Tuesday for the budget workshop. This is going to be the budget introduction tonight. So I will take direction from council on where you guys think we ought to go next.
Mayor Seaman, I'd like to move to extend the meeting.
For how long?
How long do you think we need?
You don't? We can just extend the meeting till we're done?
Until we're finished, please.
All right.
And this is just an introduction to the, um, budget. So it's not the more in-depth budget session.
All right. We have a motion to extend the meeting till.
Second.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Castellano. Do we have, we don't need to vote on it, but can I get consensus on this? All right. We're good. Then we will move on. Director Millar, good evening. Good late in the evening.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. So tonight's presentation is about the 22, 23 proposed budget. Uh, this is just an introduction. So it's going to be kind of a high level, uh, overview of the budget. I will not be going into much detail, but there will be at least two more presentations on the budget. So. So for tonight, uh, the first section, we're going to look at the major funds and their revenues and expenditures. Uh, that includes the water fund, the wastewater fund, harbor, building, and the general fund. Uh, the second section will be major projects by fund. Typically, I don't go over projects when I do budget presentations, but I felt that, uh, this was a good time to kind of go over some sections of the budget that are easily overlooked. And then the third and final section are, um, the city's Measure H expenditures. So let's begin with the water fund. Uh, so first we're going to look at revenues. As you can see, uh, aside from that top line, our charges for services are relatively flat. Uh, this kind of makes sense. Uh, fiscal year 21, 22 was the last year of the rate increases. So rates will be the same, uh, for water and, uh, water fees in the 22, 23 fiscal year. And then that intergovernmental line, uh, what that represents, um, are some ARPA funding that we're going to apply to some water projects. So you can see that revenue is going up about 15% and that is really, uh, just because of the ARPA. And then on the expense side, um, we have a few areas that are seeing increases. Uh, salaries and benefits, you know, we're, uh, implementing a series of COLAs. Uh, we're seeing health insurance rates go up a little bit. Uh, you know, PERS costs are slowly growing. Uh, but this is kind of typical, or a typical growth rate for person, or salaries and benefits. And then at the bottom, that transfer category, uh, this is cash being transferred over to the water CIP fund to pay for CIP projects. Uh, that is going up next fiscal year and that is driving a lot of growth in this fund. When we match up our revenues to expenses, uh, you can see in the 21, 22 fiscal year, we're showing a deficit, uh, positive numbers or deficits. Uh, this was not by mistake. We actually, uh, for the last rate study, we planned on, um, essentially utilizing the large cash reserves in the water fund to pay for capital projects. Uh, so that's what you're seeing both in 21, 22 and 22, 23, is simply drawing down some of those reserves so that we didn't have to increase rates even more. Next, we have the wastewater fund. Uh, very similar story in the wastewater fund. Uh, rates are not going up. We are, uh, utilizing some ARPA funding for wastewater projects. And then again, salaries and benefits are about the same rate of increase. You'll notice across all funds, you'll see similar rates of increase in this category. Uh, and then down at the bottom, you know, we're actually transferring over less cash to pay for capital projects and that's driving a lot of growth in this fund. And then I'd like to point out capital outlay. So that increased by over 400,000. Uh, that should be a one-time thing. We are buying new equipment. Uh, I forgot what that piece of equipment is, but I'm sure our public, our public works director knows. And then when we compare, you know, the bottom line, uh, we did utilize some cash in wastewater this fiscal year and next year. A little bit of a deficit, but my guess is we're going to come under. Uh, typically we budget expenditures higher than they actually come in. Uh, next we have the harbor fund. Uh, so in the harbor fund, um, not much growth in terms of what we charge, uh, for slip fees or different types of rentals. Uh, that bottom item, that $2 million in the 21, 22 category, what that represents was that both a ongoing subsidy, but also that one-time cash payment from the general fund to pay down a deficit in the harbor fund. And then looking at 22, 23, uh, that 170,000, that is actually a ongoing subsidy to make sure that this fund, uh, has a balanced budget. On the expenditure side, uh, you know, salaries and benefits are increasing at a higher rate. But, you know, this budget is relatively small. So minor changes to personnel can have a greater effect on the overall rate of change. Uh, so overall, uh, in 21, 22, uh, big windfall, one-time windfall to cover that cash deficit. And then going forward, we're looking at a budget or a balanced budget, which is actually a great thing in the harbor fund. The harbor has had years and years of bad years, or sorry. Uh, we finally kind of plugged the hole. Um, so yeah, going forward, you know, things are looking better. But we also have a deficit, which I hope to close over the course of a few years by increasing rental fees. Uh, moving on to the building fund, uh, very similar story in the building fund. Uh, we have both an ongoing subsidy plus a one-time cash payment from the general fund to pay down deficits. Uh, this ongoing subsidy of about 380,000 is much greater. Uh, we can address this subsidy by increasing building fees. But we are not, we're going to do that over, you know, a long period of time and not over any one year. So we hope in the long run that that subsidy, subsidy continues to shrink. Uh, and then looking at expenses, um, so salary and benefit. So salary and benefits, they look like they're growing a lot, but in reality, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we kept some positions vacant. So that amended budget really captured, you know, the expenditures less any vacancies. Next year, we hope to fill some vacancies, and that's why it's increasing at a higher rate. Overall, twenty-one, twenty-two, big surplus to cover that deficit, and then twenty-two, twenty-three, we're balanced, which is, which is also very good news for this fund. Okay, and last but not least, the general fund. Starting with revenues, tax revenues are flat. That's okay. They've grown quite a bit in the last couple of years. You know, before COVID, we were looking at roughly a one percent increase year over year. This is not surprising. You know, there are some things that are going down, like intergovernmental. That represents a lot of grant reimbursements. Those kind of do, those fluctuate year to year. That's normal to see. And then miscellaneous, that's going down because I don't try to predict miscellaneous payments. The reason why they're so high in twenty-one, twenty-two is because I did that budget halfway through the year, and I was able to budget for things that had already come in. On the expense side, you know, salary and benefit growth of about twelve percent, consistent with water and wastewater. Materials and services are going up mainly due to cost allocation increases. And then when you're looking at that transfer line at the bottom, most of that was that one-time cash going to those funds. And then going forward, we're going to see roughly about four million a year. And what that represents is two and a half million going to street infrastructure, a million going to facilities and park infrastructure. And then that, roughly the half a million dollars going to harbor and building to have a balanced budget in those funds. So, you know, I'm expecting in twenty-three, twenty-four to see roughly about four million dollars for similar purposes. So the bottom line is this current fiscal year, about a half a million dollar surplus. We started out at the beginning of the year with about a three million dollar surplus. And then next year, we're looking at just under a two million dollars, which is similar to where we started, because if you consider the fact that we're adding another million dollars to infrastructure spending, you know, our surplus pretty much stayed the same. We're just spending more on streets and facilities. Okay, major projects by fund. So a lot of, lot of these funds are not operational funds. They're used for tracking grants or tracking CIP projects. So a lot of this money is like one-time money that you might see in one fiscal year but never see again. Some of these funds are called special revenue funds, and that is because, you know, tracking grants are considered special revenue because they're unusual and don't always come in. So let's begin with Fund Two Twenty-seven. So we've been using Fund Two Twenty-seven to capture Caltrans grants, and Caltrans monies can come from either the state or the federal government, but usually they're administered through Caltrans. So for next year, we have two projects in this fund for a total of about four point four million. All this money will be reimbursed to the city, so it represents money coming from the outside. Next, we have a Fund Two Thirty, environmental grants. So these are grants that are focused on, you know, habitat and, I'm sorry, just cleaning up, you know, polluted sites. So again, all of this money is coming from the outside for a total of four point four million. I created a new fund for twenty-two, twenty-three called the CAPE Grants. Our CAPE program has been very successful in getting outside monies, and I didn't want to throw these grants in the general fund to throw off our numbers. I like to treat the general fund as more of an operational fund. So as you can see, they've brought in about two point seven next fiscal year, or two point seven million, all of which will be reimbursed to us by the state or the federal government. I also created Fund Two Forty. This is called the Streets, Sidewalks, and Parking Lots Fund. So this is where I'm going to capture all of the funding sources that go to pay for street improvements, sidewalks, and parking lots. So for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we're looking at about three point five million in spending in this category. And for this fund, I do want to show the revenue sources. So we're looking at two and a half million from the general fund, about eight hundred thousand from gas tax, another six hundred twenty thousand for, from RMRA, and then a two hundred thousand from RSTP. I'm sorry, I don't know those acronyms, but I can clarify at the next meeting. But anyways, I do want to show that, you know, we now have over four million dollars to spend on our street infrastructure. You know, going back to fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, we were looking at roughly two to half a million dollars, or two hundred to half a million dollars in spending. And now we're over four million, which is very close to what we need to not only maintain the streets, but to improve them. Next, I have Fund Two Forty-one. This is really a CIP, CIP fund directed towards a more governmental-style projects. So next year, we're looking at about thirteen million in projects that are all being reimbursed through some sort of outside funding. And then finally, I have the Water CIP Fund at about four point four million. And the Wastewater CIP Fund totaling close to four million as well. So overall, if you were to add up all the money that's coming in through grants, we're looking at. So it is very significant, and it's a good thing to kind of highlight. So the final section are Measure H expenditures. So let's begin with how much Measure H is bringing in versus Measure Q. So for twenty-two, twenty-three, we are estimating about thirteen point two million. The Measure Q equivalent would be about five point two million. So that's an addition of over eight million dollars. Here's a list of how we're spending the money. So I have it in categories. So those few, first three items, what that represents was us bringing or pulling out operational expenditures from the gas tax fund. Because over time, that fund, even though it used to be for projects, it started to some, or make up for a lack of revenue in the general fund. So eventually, all our gas tax monies was being, were being used to pay for people and things of that nature and not projects. So what we did was we took all of those operational expenses out of the gas tax fund and put them in the general fund, therefore leaving all of that gas tax revenue available for streets. And then we, you know, of course, we have the two point five million for streets and the million for facilities and parks projects. And then the next category came from strategic visioning. This was the increase to parks operations as well as funding CAPE out of the general fund. And then a similar story here, we did pull out some operational expenses out of the harbor and building fund. Those funds could not support these divisions, nor did we believe that they should be supporting a lot of these activities. And then finally, we have some unallocated monies from Measure H at about one point four million. So if I put this into a pie chart, you can see that about fifty-five percent of our Measure H dollars are going towards infrastructure. And then about equal, equal slices for both strategic visioning as well as our surplus. And then ten percent is just to support those funds that have had years of trouble. I do want to point out what our investment into the CAPE program has brought the city. So Measure H is only covering six hundred thousand dollars of the CAPE program. That's only sixty-two percent of their operating budget. They've been very successful in getting different monies from the outside, whether that's Measure Z or some state housing funds. And what they've done with that was actually, they've grown the department, so they have, I believe, about four FTEs that they've funded through grants, and that's what that three hundred and seventy-six thousand represents. And then, you know, add on top of that, the grant projects or the grants they've been awarded, and we've actually leveraged that six hundred thousand dollars by about six times the investment. So that really concludes my presentation for tonight. Next Tuesday is the study session. The study session will focus on position changes by departments, expenditures by department, and then a Q and A with the departments as well. It's also an opportunity to go through the budget and to come up with questions. You can email those to me or to any department, and we'll do our best to address those questions at the study session.
Excellent. Councilmember Castellano, you have a question? Let's clap for Lane.
Yeah, is it, can I ask questions? I mean, I know.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, all right.
We go through the whole regulatory process, I think.
So, so just to make sure I understand clearly, has Measure H made us more competitive for grant funding? Or for, for the CAPE program, sorry. Has, has investing city funds basically made us more competitive for grants within the CAPE program?
So none of the grants we received have required matches, and that's the way I would think of that question, is whether or not we've used our, our funding for matches. We haven't. I would say that because of the investment, our competitiveness for grants and demonstrating that we are funding these outside of donations and grants likely has, especially for like the Emergency Solutions Grant, and maybe some other grants that we've gotten that has helped. A lot of that funding's come from the county, and I think council's demonstrated support of that, and the success of the program has gone a long way in making us successful.
And then the pension, our pension obligation that hasn't, will that come up in any of our budget study sessions, or, or how does that relate to kind of, yeah? Where, where are we at with that?
You will not see that in the, the budget process. The market has very much changed since we first started going down that road. There are reasons why we might hesitate at this time, so. I mean, to answer your question, you won't see that at the study session, but I, I, I'm willing to come back maybe at the following meeting with an update and our choices at this time.
And anything related to the unfunded liability and our pension obligation is built into the overall budget.
Yeah, technically, it wouldn't have much effect because our plan was to capture all those savings and to put that aside, so whether we do it or not, it's kind of been planned for in the long run.
Did we have any other questions? Councilmember Arroyo?
I sort of hate to ideate right now, but I'm going to because I, I think participatory budgeting has come up a bit. And we've been talking in strategic visioning about how just civic learning and in several meetings that I've been in, civic engagement and learning is so important, and people often just don't understand the city budget or how we prioritize things or how they can be more engaged. And I wonder a very tiny fraction of our surplus for some participatory budgeting with the community where they get to learn about city operations and then decide how the money gets spent. Arcata did it with fifteen thousand dollars. So I would like to one-up Arcata, but, but, you know, it doesn't have to be a significant expense, but I think there is a lot of significant community benefit and learning that goes into it.
Yeah, and I think we can discuss that at the budget study session. I, I will say that we have reached out to community groups to try and get more participation. I think some of the information that council, or at least some of the comments that council has made about how some of the biggest decisions we make don't have a lot of input. And so we've contacted the chamber, and the chamber's contacted us about having participation in a meeting about our budget and where we're at with our budget. But that decision on a participatory budget and what that amount would be would be something council can discuss at the budget study session.
Okay, well, then I'd like to discuss that at our budget study session. I'm bookmarking it. Because I think when people participate in talking about the budget, it's different than if you say you get to decide how we're going to spend X amount of money, completely decided by the community. But we're going to teach you about our process, and then you're going to decide. You know, I think that's, that's a very different experience than people coming and telling us what they think we should spend money on. So anyway. Thanks for considering it.
Any other questions?
I hate to bring this up, Finance Director, but what do you think, given the, what the market's doing? Do we anticipate any potential dark skies in the future for our budget? You know, I mean, are we, are we affected by it as much as the state revenue is, even though the state's a hundred billion in the black this year? Probably not next year, you know?
The state is vulnerable because I believe they capture capital gains taxes, which are going to take a huge hit based on what's going on in the market. For us, there is a chance that you see the consumer start to back off goods and go and spend their money towards services. That's kind of what happened during the pandemic was, you know, you were stuck at home, so you were going to ACE and spending money that way. And then you add on, you know, the effects of inflation, which tend to push people away from buying goods. I would not be surprised to see a slight downturn in sales tax, but not to the extent that would have any major effect on our budget. I do believe we could kind of withstand some bad years going forward because our margins are so good at this point that, you know, we're not spending every penny or spending more than what we've, what we're anticipating receiving, which was actually kind of our behavior prior to the pandemic. So the best way to be prepared for those events is to make sure that, you know, we're not just doing a balanced budget, but we're kind of saving some, or, you know, we're running, you know, at least a small surplus that protects us from those events, but it also, you know, builds reserves so that when big downturns come, you know, which is likely every ten years, that we can kind of get through those, you know, those periods.
Thanks.
All right, anything else? This is an item. Is there anybody out there who has a public comment on Zoom about this item?
Nobody is raising their hand.
All right. Then when I bring it back, I want to say thank you for talking about how we leveraged funds. I think it's always important to look at the investments we make and, and how sometimes that actually has a better return. And budgeting, often people look at it as a very, you know, plus and minus, and they forget that, you know, sometimes it takes money to make money. And so I'm glad you pointed it out. Councilmember Castellano?
Could, could you send us the report that you just gave?
Yes.
Super, thanks. All right.
And the, the budget will be posted to the website tomorrow. It's likely to change a small amount before it's adopted because I've already noticed a few things, but yeah, just FYI. So, but I'll make sure that my presentations are available with the budget documents.
Excellent. And I think with that, we will end this item. And I will ask it as 10:02. I, we do want to get to item G, which is Legislative Action Correspondence. And I believe Councilmember Arroyo, did you have something?
I did, thank you. So the Surface Transportation Board today issued their preliminary decision about the rail banking and the, the disposition of the former North Coast Railroad Authority line. And it's not looking favorable for a couple of, I would say a few local projects and may have impacts on also, but it's still a little early to say what those impacts will be. But I'd like to request that we direct our staff to work with other local jurisdictions, whether that's, you know, other cities or county, to collaborate on a letter to the Surface Transportation Board. While, while their preliminary decision is really showing how the likely final decision will be written, I still think there's the opportunity to weigh in and to say, you know, this region has been working on all these trails, trails and transportation projects that rely on rail banking as part of the strategy to move them forward. And this puts that in jeopardy. So I, I realize it's not very specific. Like there's not a letter I can read to you right now because I think it would be a collaborative effort. And so if folks are comfortable trusting the judgment of our staff to reach out and write a letter with other agencies, then I, that's the direction I'd like to encourage us to go.
Is that a yes or just?
No, I, I was just going to say, I agree. I mean, it's a, it's a big deal what's on the table. And we should, we should work expeditiously.
Would we, would they bring the letter back for us to look at before they sent it? Or would that just be something that we would just go ahead and do? I mean, how?
I'm open to either.
Timeline, I was wondering, it's problematic.
Well, the, the timeline so far has been, it was extremely unknown when they were going to make this decision. And then boom, out of nowhere, it, um, you know, the statutorily, they're way past when they were supposed to. So already, um, but, um, I think it would be pretty quick.
So I, I was going to say, we could get feedback from the other jurisdictions. I don't believe they have an agenda item similar to this where they could really make that decision. So we can, depending on council's direction, we could reach out to them and see what their potential draft proposal would be to their board or council and then send it preemptively. And it may not match what their board or council approves, if you see what I'm getting at. So staff can go in either direction. We can reach out to them, get their input and put something together and, and put it out there to the Surface Transportation Board. Or we could bring back whatever comes up through those discussions back to council at the first meeting in June.
Councilmember Castellano.
I would, I don't know, and this might be a question for City Attorney Autumn Luna, but I would personally trust like a work group of Councilmember Bauer and Councilmember Arroyo to work with staff on this, just because I feel like you have the most expertise on this particular issue.
I would support that. I'd support that.
Okay. Great. I also support that. I'm willing to serve. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Good, good idea.
All right. Do we have any quick future agenda items we want to add? Councilmember Moulton.
I would like to get some information on what it would take for the developments that the city, for the stuff we're developing to be required to be all-electric. Not a general ordinance that would impact everybody, but just the stuff that we are responsible for, for our housing element. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think I said that a couple of weeks ago, so I'm.
Okay.
Fully supportive.
Are you already working on that?
So, well, we're working on, staff took Councilmember Bauer's request to be more along the lines of the building code and kind of the climate action plan and making that a component of any development within the city of Eureka. But my understanding that Councilmember Moulton is looking at is specific to the city on sites that are a part of the housing element and making that a requirement. I would say that for the projects that have been already to council and approved, both the Earth Center and the Link, that that would be kind of after the fact. And we wouldn't want to put that on people who have already been through the process. But for future ones, we could bring back what that would look like and potentially what the impact could be.
I feel like it's a slightly lower hanging fruit.
All right. Who wants to see that on the agenda? Do we have a majority?
Is it a modification to what we were already talking about before or an addition?
Staff is taking it as a modification, that it is more specific to the, specific to those projects, not necessarily an ordinance in general.
I don't want to supersede Councilmember Bauer's direction.
So what we were planning to bring back to Councilmember Bauer is what that would look like, not necessarily an ordinance.
I'm just asking for information, so could that be just included as part of it then? That is a separated out.
We could bring back a report that discusses both options, yes.
Is that okay? Okay, thank you.
All right, everybody seems happy with that. Anything else we need to add? All right. It is 10:08. We do have the City Managers Report, which was going to be really good. Is there any reason we couldn't? I know next meeting, we want to keep it as short as possible because people have things that they're going to be going to following. Is there a time element to this?
I, I, my understanding is that Director Girving plans to be brief, but I don't know if council's questions will render his, his, his expectations of brief as being absolute, as being brief.
Come on now.
So I will take council's direction as to whether or not they want to do this now or later.
We'll let City Manager Slattery introduce you while you're walking up. We're going to be.
Director Girving would like to come up and talk about a couple of, uh, projects that have been discussed with the community and also with council, one being Sixth Traffic Calming Ideas and Project. And another one being a potential propose, proposal for Washington and Dolby around the Washington School. Thank you, Director Girving.
Thank you, City Manager Slattery. I'll, I'll try to be brief. I can control my own brevity, but not yours. So like the city manager mentioned, uh, we've got a couple of opportunities to, to try some new things in conjunction with a couple of upcoming street projects. The first is with Sixth and Seventh Street. Council's aware that we received an HCP grant to fund some really good pedestrian safety improvements, bulb outs, rapid flashing beacons, striping changes, other traffic calming things. That project is getting ready to go into design and we anticipate constructing it next year. In preparation for that, we've heard a lot from the neighbors along those streets, concerns about speeding traffic, about traffic volumes, about what can be done to improve safety and traffic calming. One thing that staff has noticed is something that I think probably all of you have, is that the street really changes in character when you go from the commercial area, say, west of here, around K and L Streets down to Broadway. Everything to the east toward Myrtle is residential. And the, the streets function differently there. There are no, number one, there are no controlled intersections along Sixth and Seventh. And there are no signals that would impact our ability to change the lane configuration. So what we've proposed to the neighborhood, and they were excited about the idea, is a trial run of reducing Sixth and Seventh Streets from L Street down from two lanes to one. And we're going to be implementing that on a trial basis for one week on June 6th, where we've already taken pre-project speed surveys and traffic counts and tried to, you know, get a good baseline for what's happening. And we'll do the same during the project. We're also going to work with the neighbors who've already engaged with us to help talk with neighbors ahead of time and get their feedback. And we're also working with Caltrans and with the Community Services Department to figure out ways of collecting feedback from the general motoring and walking and biking public. That's going to be the difficult part, but we want to hear it. We want to find out what people think. Now, we don't really have any illusion that people will behave the same way if we, you know, end up constructing this next year. We, we put striping on the ground and all that. The same way then, as they will now when it's done with cones, it will look like a construction area, it'll feel like a construction area. But I can say from experience being out at our construction sites that people don't necessarily drive slower through construction zones. So, you know, may, maybe it will be more accurate than I think it will be. In any case, that's a pretty exciting thing. Councilmember Bregel's been really involved with some of the neighbors there and continuing to work with them in publicizing this. And we just wanted to give you a heads up before it happens. The other one that's similar in nature, probably a more sign, well, definitely a more significant change. And on a different and somewhat more challenging timeline is W and Dolbyer Streets. Those are part of our paving project this year. W, Dolbyer and Manzanita are all going to be. Part of that, staff thought this is the time, if there ever is one, to finally answer the question of whether or not it's feasible to convert those two streets to a one-way couplet, like Sixth and Seventh, like Fourth and Fifth, or like H and I. And to that end, we worked with a consultant to do a, a traffic study about that. And the, the conclusion is yes, it's feasible. We are working with them now to revise that study. There were elements of it that were unclear. Some things that we wanted to be covered weren't covered. So they've got our comments, they're going to be revising it. But now the next step is, let's talk about doing a trial run there. And first, the, you know, we need to talk about what we could achieve with W and Dolbyer by taking away one lane of traffic in each direction on each street and making W Street southbound and Dolbyer Street northbound. You free up a lot of real estate to provide some really good bike facilities, probably a buffered bike lane. Unfortunately, there's not quite enough room to do diagonal parking, at least not on W Street, which is where that parking could really be utilized by the zoo and the park. There is more room on Dolbyer Street because the right of, or not the right of way, but the improved section of the street is wider. Unfortunately, we don't really need the parking on, on Dolbyer Street. That's not where it's needed. But still really good bike facilities, hopefully some good traffic calming opportunities. There have been, I think the number is around 20 collisions in the study period on those two streets. And all the literature out there suggests a reduction in collisions anywhere from 11 to 51%. That's a really wide range, but still significant just by switching streets to one way because you reduce the number of conflict points between vehicles. The other change that would impact people coming to and from Cotten is that the intersection at Hemlock and Walnut, which is right there at the south end of the reservoir going out into Cotten, would become very, very simple. You could actually probably configure it so that it didn't have any stop signs, yield signs or anything. If you're going southbound on W, you bend onto Hemlock and bend south onto Walnut. Same thing coming the other direction in from Cotten. And then you would just have the people who are going east on Hemlock looking to complete that loop around the Miracle Mile, as some people call it. They could just continue straight and potentially merge back together with the traffic coming in from Cotten. There is a chance that there's not enough room for that and we might want to go ahead and put a stop in. But that's not a significant number of vehicles, at least not currently. And, and that's one of the things we're looking at in the study is how many vehicles would want to make that movement. So the reason why that timeline is more challenging is number one, we are further behind than we are with the Sixth and Seventh Street project. And the paving is happening this summer, not next year. And we recognize that if we're going to implement a change like this, it would really be great to do it before school starts again. So we don't know if that's feasible. We're going to do our best. We're going to implement this trial one-way conversion, which is going to be a little more challenging than the one-lane reduction on Sixth and Seventh Streets, just in terms of signage and messaging and, and all of that. But hopefully we can assess that sometime early-ish this summer and then look to potentially include the changes into this year's paving or the restriping after the paving. That would be preceded by a, a recommendation to TSC, which would then give a recommendation back to the council. Then we'd have to convert those streets to one-way and, and put it on the ground. So those are the two updates. Wanted to get them in front of you tonight because of the fact that the Sixth and Seventh Street pilot will start on June 6th before your next council meeting. And happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, does anybody have questions? Yes, I mean, it's your meeting, it's your time. Councilmember Arroyo.
In addition to the couplet idea, we considered raised crosswalks, i.e. speed humps.
Are you, which, which set of streets are you talking about?
No, sorry, by Washington.
Oh, so W and Dolbyer, W already has some speed tables right by the zoo. We have not necessarily looked at new ones on the Dolbyer Street side.
That's what I was thinking of.
Congestion is a little bit different over there. You don't have as long of a stretch. You know, Washington School is right there by the stop sign, so people are slowing down anyway. Now, that being said, is it off the table? No, it's not, but I think we'll look and see what happens and go from there.
Okay.
I, if I may.
No, yes, ma'am.
I just want to point out, and this is not because it's 10:20, but this isn't an agendized item. What we've just heard from Director Girving is not appropriate, would be more appropriate for an agendized item on this matter. So just, uh, just with that caution, go on.
Thank you. No, that's very good. I will hold any further questions slash comments.
All right. Then are we going to wrap this item up? Thank you.
Thank you.
And once again, we're stuck at the end of a long meeting. Okay, anything else?
That's all I have, thank you, ma'am.
Alrighty. So now it is time for council reports and city-related travel reports. And we will start down here with Councilmember Bregel.
Councilmember Bregel did a lot of things. Councilmember Bregel had a very difficult day and she's going to pass on sharing those things. Look at my Facebook page if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer.
I'll be brief. We, we had a CalCities meeting, was that before the last meeting? I almost, that was, that was after, right? Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm tired and confused, but we had a great, hosted a great event with CalCities. And, um, yeah, that was a really great thing, lots to talk about, but maybe we'll save for later. And, um, you know, we've had some good discussions about mental health in the community that I'm sure will continue and, and how we're trying to address those, both at hospital level and, and locally at all levels. So more to come on that, but excited that's actually happening. So, yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Alrighty. Councilmember Arroyo.
I'll pass tonight. Lots going on, but I'm too tired to think, so keep, keep moving.
Councilmember Moulton.
Well, I'm awake, so, um, I, I just wanted to point out that I went to Arts Alive and went to the Year of the Tiger Celebration put on by Happy, the Humboldt Asian and Pacific Islanders in solidarity. Just wonderful and beautiful and I felt so, um, they introduced themselves and said that the, the Lion Dancers are back in Eureka for the first time in 137 years. And that really got to me, just that this, this community that once shunned an entire group of people is now closing streets to celebrate them and bringing in all these wonderful performers and dedicating Charlie Moon Way. And it's just been, I'm very proud to be part of Eureka right now. It was a vibrant and crowded and interesting event. It was really great to go out. I attended a two-by-two meeting with Eureka City Schools. Those are always very informative. Those are always very informative, although I was fighting a cold, so I was on the phone and couldn't participate too much in discussion. Just to say that I really appreciate the interactive relationship between the schools and the city, getting to know from their perspective exactly like what's really high on their priority list right now is really valuable to me as a councilperson, as well as a mom with a kid going into kindergarten pretty soon. Always pleased to see their continued work on, around student mental health, as well as diversity, equity and inclusion being on their agenda. That's great. Coming up Memorial Day weekend, Humboldt's oldest and the largest free-to-watch family event, the Kinetic Grand Championship, is happening live in person days in Eureka. This is where they throw themselves at the water, so good luck, maybe they'll float. Good luck to all the kinetic racers and I hope that everybody gets out somewhere on the course at some point to watch it because it is such a unique and amazing, I'm sure you know what it is. But it's just so uniquely Humboldt County and so uniquely Eureka to celebrate art all on the backdrop of our wonderful, glorious environment here that we live in, our beautiful backyard. So for the glory, for the record. And go check out the CAP at humboldgov.org. Search for the CAP and check it out. We're going to put some concrete things into motion and we definitely need that public input in the process. That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Castellano.
Okay, um, let's see. I, I wanted, I attended a meeting between Keep Eureka Beautiful and a couple of city staff, Scott Elsmore, and I just appreciate how willing to just, you know, participate with community dialogue, city staff were about that. I thought it was a really productive meeting, all about weed barriers, people. Which, anyway, policy's changed on weed barriers. You don't need them so much anymore. Now we know. And let's see, I participated in the CalCities Executive Committee. Some other meetings I also attended, but definitely want to just, yeah, celebrate the Happy's work in the community with the Chinatown Celebration and Charlie Moon Way. Let's see, I do want to just say, uh, the HWMA meeting, we're making some pretty big decisions right now around SB 1383. And we are going to be shifting from being a recycling facility to being a compost facility. So that's probably, you're probably going to hear, anyway, there will be some education around this shift, but it's going to happen, you know, in the world of government relatively quickly and, and that it will happen over the course of this year. So that's, that'll be interesting to see. And, and it was unanimous from the board to move forward with that. Continuing to do some housing work. On May 26th, I'm hosting a town hall at Jefferson Community Center from 6:00 to 7:30. And tomorrow, um, the Ink Peoples collaborating with Regional Center and the City of Eureka. And thanks so much to Assistant City Manager Pam Powell for helping with this, to host a self, a meeting for self-advocates for, for people with disabilities. So, um, so that folks get support and have more opportunities to learn about advocating for themselves and government and at the state level. So that's going to happen here tomorrow at 10:30. And that's all. Oh, I do want to say, and I, I don't know, I feel like, I feel like it could be great to have some sort of recognition of this person. But Brian Tripp passed away over the weekend and, you know, I think, uh, I've just been thinking a lot about him. I only had the opportunity to meet him a couple of times, but, you know, he, the thought that keeps coming to me is he like provided more nourishment, just so much nourishment for our arts and culture community, for the indigenous community and that our lives are better because of the work he did in this community and beyond. So just, um, just want to recognize him and all of the people in his communities, in his community as well.
Thank you. That was a nice thing to end on. I also want to say this is a really long meeting, but it was a really rich meeting. There was a lot of really varied and good discussion and a lot of public engagement throughout. So I would say that was a good meeting. And I'll see you all on Election Day.